Good evening, are all the candidates on the stage? That are going to be here? Our numbers aren't quite matching right now. I have, there's 24 people running, two of informers if they're not going to be able to be here, and two are AWOL. Maybe they'll show up. Good evening! My name's Lyle Johnson, I'm going to be the moderator for tonight's candidate's forum. As is tradition in the last few years, and we're going to be following that, I will read the land acknowledgement statement at the beginning of every meeting. Peacock Collegiate acknowledges that we are on traditional lands referred to as Treaty Number Four Territory. Treaty Four Territory includes the original lands of the Cree, Ojibwa, Salto, Dakota, Lakota, Nakota, and the homeland of the Métis Nation. We respect and honor the treaties that were made on all territories. We acknowledge the harms and mistakes of the past and we are committed to move forward in partnership with Indigenous nations in the spirit of reconciliation and collaboration. Okay. First of all, I want to congratulate you guys on being smart for coming out and finding out about these candidates. There's 24 candidates running for council for six spots, and some of them are not as well-known as others. And the fact that you're here tonight to hear what they have to say and make a decision, an informed decision, I think that just deserves congratulations to you guys, so give yourselves an applause. Okay, thank you. Now, we have candidates and what we've done, you saw us huddling down here, we took our candidates' list and names and drew the drawing, the names in order, so we know the order for them to present. They don't know that, but we do. And that way, we're just trying to be fair to everybody, and we were thought about going alphabetical, but all through your lives in school, if you were a Z, you always had to wait and you go "Ooh", and if you were an A, great, but... So, we've just randomly shuffled the names through. And for each candidate, we'll be given three minutes to explain their positions and why we should vote for them. There's a microphone stand in the center of the stage, that's what will be used by the candidates to make their statement. After we've gone through all the candidates, we will make an adjustment somehow that there's going to be questions allowed from the audience that you may have to particular candidates and ask them, and the candidate will respond to you. You don't have to do that, but you can. Any questions so far? Okay. Now, the Kinsman Club of Moose Jaw are the ones who put this together. They're the ones that said citizens of Moose Jaw should know, and I want to thank citizens, the candidates down here for putting it together. Kirk and Daniel, and there was somebody else around here with the Kinsman shirt, but I don't know who that is. Do you know who it is? Oh, there's more than one? Okay. So if any of you get misbehaving, they'll chuck you out, so... That's their role, okay? So thank you very much. All right. This is carried live on Discover Moose Jaw, and it also will be posted on their website, so if you miss something or you want to go back and check something, you can do that. It'll be on for the next week until the elections are held. So just so you know, thanks to Discover Moose Jaw for their involvement in this process. We really appreciate that. Okay. Now, the first name drawn tonight is Jamie Logan. Jamie has been sick for the last little while, and he said, "I don't know if I'm going to be there or not, but I put my name on the list." So we'll put the name on the list. Jamie, you have three minutes? Thank you. But, you know, you'll be able to read on the website, our city council candidates. There's a nice little write-up on each of the council candidates on the City of Moose Jaw website. So if you want to go there and check out what Jamie has to say, why he says it, that would be nice. Second. So my first real person is Mr. Sam Morrison. Sam?
Yeah.
What I'm gonna do, I'm gonna start the clock. And if you go too long, I'll wave a Christian up in the booth and he'll shut the mic off.
Yeah?
Okay? This is not just for Sam, it's not just for Sam, it's for you all.
Alright.
Okay? And, go!
Welcome everyone, just a moment please. And thank you for your interest in our city. Thanks to our hard-working Kinsman Club and Peacock Collegiate for hosting this event. I moved to Moose Jaw in the spring of 83 at the age of 18. I did sneak away to Saskatoon in 93 for four and a half years, but could not stay away. Moose Jaw has always felt like home. After selling my business three years ago, I did run for mayor and thought I did pretty good for nobody. I was prodded by many to run again and decided city council would be a better place to start and learn. I feel we have a great city here and a lot to offer, but I believe it's underutilized. We talk about development, but seems to stop short of what needs to be done. We need good roads for supplies to be transported in and out of our many future business endeavors. That will require spending ahead of time to get the results we want. Growth is not always easy, and some decisions won't be very popular, but good long-term results will require some sacrifice today. We need the same attitude towards housing. We must provide serviceable lots with no half-measures. We must work with developers to succeed. The goal should be to streamline their process of building in Moose Jaw so they will keep growing with our city. It benefits nobody to make this process difficult. Is anyone here in favor of continuing with SAMMA? Okay. We received enough complaints about SAMMA's process that we must start researching an alternative immediately. I agree with many of my fellow candidates that taxing on frontage may be a solution. I would like to see our residents not get punished for improving their property with higher taxes. Home improvements better our whole landscape and provides a much more inviting place to live. We must also address public safety for everyone. Our safety has been on a rapid decline for the last several years, and this may be one of our toughest challenges. Our taxpayers deserve to be able to enjoy our city's many amenities without looking over their shoulders. We need to identify the small percentage of homeless that are ready to accept help and move forward with everything we can do. There is a percentage that aren't ready for help, and we will need our healthcare system to step up their game. We also need to provide support to the police with tools and training to deal with such situations as squatting, harassment, vandalism, and theft. In short, we need to have the cops' backs. I look forward to working with progressive city council and mayor. We will never agree on everything, but can continue to work towards the common goal of the prosperous and safe city we all want.
Tom?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sam. Next, number three on our list, Dave Stevenson.
That's good to get it out of the way really. So my name's Dave Stevenson. I'm born and raised on South Hill and still live on South Hill. I'd like to thank the Kinsmen and everybody else that's put an effort in tonight to have this happen. But I would like to see Moose Jaw as a friendly city again, as it seems it is becoming more notorious for bad than good. I want to have a long-range, solid approach to deal with infrastructure projects and know what the priorities and needs are of the city. I want to promote the city for business, tourism, safety, and the beauty that it should be. We should also have public washrooms for visitors in downtown area and our parks for use by the people when visiting these areas of our city. I've had many friends that have come here and have suggested that our city streets are some of the worst that they've seen. Now, I don't know all the details about the process, but that's comments that have been made. We need to change these first impressions of our city in order to encourage business and population growth. I want to see us encourage new business and population growth. With new business and population growth, we will have a larger tax base and therefore theoretically have more tax dollars to draw from. My vision also includes seeing Moose Jaw prosper, be inclusive of all citizens that live here, have affordable living as well as subsidized housing and other services so that our citizens don't need to travel outside our city for services. I want to see us keep more work in-house versus contracting out many services that I believe can be done in-house for cheaper. Homelessness isn't going away anytime soon, so we need to look at a permanent solution for some sort of homeless shelter that is inclusive of all, not just one sex or the other. When I was doing the pit count in Moose Jaw, many people on the street were in favor and believed that City of Moose Jaw needed a permanent homeless shelter of some kind to help those in need. We need to work with all agencies such as police, fire, healthcare providers, Moose Jaw Housing, Square One, John Howard Society Salvation Army, and the Food Bank, and the list grows all the time. The city should support all these groups that are supporting the homeless and less fortunate now and work with them to create a program that works for all, to keep our community safe for everyone that lives here. We need to pressure the provincial and federal governments to provide funding, as this should not just be the city to provide these services that individuals need. I believe that we need to be part of the solution, not part of the problem. More and more people are using the services of the Food Bank and Hunger Moose Jaw, and we need to do our part in showing our support so that when these groups apply for donations and grants, the governments take into account that Moose Jaw is supporting these grassroots organizations such as Square One, Hope Ministries, who are now providing multiple meals a day for up to 100 people in Moose Jaw. This doesn't cost money to support these groups publicly. Everyone knows winter is coming very soon, and we need to have warm-up shelters sooner than later so people aren't freezing to death on our streets. I want us to work together towards securing a location for the landfill and keep Moose Jaw safe. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dave. Okay. Number four, Jamal James.
I'm Jamal James. I'm a lifelong resident in Moose Jaw, and I've been hacked around the community in various manners in my 44 years here. I think we're all here for the same reasons, and we all see the same problems and we want the same solutions. Whether we agree on what they are or what they aren't, depends on the person, but I think that we can all work together to achieve them if we put our heads together and are willing to listen. My goal is basically a four-point plan that can be summed up with the acronym TIPS. Taxation Reform: We all agree SAMMA's not doing it for us. The way that they do things is arbitrary, and the classifications can leave people with stick or shock on their tax bill whenever there's a reassessment, and we need to change that. It has to be more consistent, it has to be affordable. The I is for Infrastructure. We have some major infrastructure needs that need to be addressed, and we have to prioritize those needs over wants before we spend any more money. And we have to do it in a way that gives us good value for our dollars so that taxpayers aren't stuck with perpetual tax increases every year. P, Poverty Reduction: It's a big problem. We're seeing it with these economic times. A lot of people are finding that hard to make ends meet, right? You know, we need to look at strategies to make housing more affordable for people and to make life more affordable so that people can keep their homes and not end up on the streets. We need to foster growth in our community and create good-paying jobs so that people have alternatives when they do lose a job. And my final point is Service Optimization. We have a lot of services that have a lot of red tape and a lot of bureaucracy to go through, and not just for us, for the city workers too. I think we can streamline a lot of those processes by simplifying the way we do things. One example would be for our business licenses. We have different classifications that are income-based, and when you look at the price versus the income base for the classification, it doesn't make any sense. A company that makes 10 times more than another company pays only double what the other one pays for a business license? Let's simplify that and get rid of the classification and have a simple base tax rate or a simple base license fee for everybody. So, that's my vision for the city. I hope that you'll put your support behind me, and I hope that I can work with another five of these individuals and mayor to get good things done for our city in the future going forward. I saved my time.
Thank you very much, Jamal. Next, we have number five, Doug Blanc.
Well, thank you. First, I'd like to thank the Kinsmen for putting this event on. They're a crucial part of the Moose Jaw in many areas, and I'd like to thank Lyle Johnson for being their chairperson. But I'd remiss if I didn't thank everybody out here that attended this event tonight, because this means that you are concerned about our municipal election. I was raised in Moose Jaw along with my wife, Vicky Glassford, and I attended both elementary, high school, and STI Politech here. I worked for the Ministry of Highways for 28 years. I sat on a variety of committees there, including Deputy Minister Subcommittee on three different occasions when I won awards on for that. I sat on the Thunder Creek Local School Board for 10 years. I was on the, a member of the John Howard Provincial Society for a couple of years. My tenure on city council, I represent the citizens of Moose Jaw on the Moose Jaw Police Commission for four years. Two years as vice-chair, Moose Jaw Exhibition Board, Moose Jaw Museum and Air Gallery, Parks and Rec, and Roads and Infrastructure. My experience has given me the ability to deal with budget constraints and complex issues. We've talked, there's been lots of talk about our tax base and our tax assessment. It is something we need to look at. Whether we stay with SAMMA, whether we change their process on how they do it, or go to a completely different venue like we used to have in-house assessment. But we need to look all of it. I've attended all the council meetings and executive, and I believe I've been a good voice. I've listened to the comments made by other counselors, administration, along with residents to make informed decisions. I dealt with the issues, and I've always left the personality out of this. I know over the next number of years, we're going to have some major infrastructure needs. Our Crescent View Pump House, it is number one on the list as far as I'm concerned. It needs to be replaced. Fourth Avenue Viaduct, outdoor pool, along with our road repair and cast-iron replacement, just to name a few. All of the issues that have come to city council the last four years that I've been on there, I've visited them if I was able to. If it was something that it was a location that I could visit, I looked at it personally so that I would know what was there. As a member of the Moose Jaw Police Commission, I've lobbied along with the administration and the police force, the provincial government for funding to assist in the safety on our streets. This was achieved a couple of months ago when they announced eight new officers. I also lobbied for changes on our police force that allowed more officers on the street and to allow safety in our city. I'd be pleased and very honored to be your representative on city council for the next four years, because I know we have many issues. We're gonna have to look at our budget, we're gonna have to look at absolutely everything so that not one dollar is wasted. Everything goes towards what we need in this city so that the citizens can carry on. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next candidate is Daryl Markin.
Thank you for having me this evening. Congratulations to fellow candidates. Each of us have unique strengths that bring to help our community grow and be the best it can. I've been married for the past 25 years to my lovely wife, who supports and understands the need to serve. I have three children, two are young adults, one teenager. I grew up in Moose Jaw, and in fact, too, on South Hill. Once done in public school, I graduated from the University of Calgary with a degree in economics. Once done university, I started my financial service, in this financial service industry. And in 2003, the opportunity arose to come back to Moose Jaw to own a business. When you own a business, it teaches you to serve. Serve not just customers, but to serve the community. I believe strong communities are built through service, and that's why I constantly invest in my time and resources back into our town, supporting local initiatives and causes that matter to our families. My five years on the Moose Jaw Police Commission, I've been on the front lines of decisions that have direct impact on the safety of our residents. One initiative that I can see coming in the very near future are computers in our cars. Why is it important members currently have to write their reports in the station? This takes away from them being on our streets. Computers will allow us more time on the streets where Moose Jaw needs it the most. I want our senior citizens and our youth, our families, to feel safe. Today, I can say that I feel safe. As an owner navigating the ups and downs, I know firsthand the struggles and resilience of our local entrepreneurs. Remember the high-street fiasco? I know firsthand the effects of bad communication and poor planning, and what that does to a business, and what it did to the business like mine. But all businesses that were affected and still working on getting their business back to prosperity. I value hard work and innovation. I've dedicated to creating an environment that only sustains, but encourages local business to thrive. My vision is to find a way to property-assess our residential and commercial properties, to find real solutions, exploring real alternatives for property assessment and alternatives to SAMMA. How can we make it better? How can we make it fair? Transparent communications with all our residents where our money is being spent and maximizing the value when it's spent. We need to address our city dump. Do we need to finance ourselves, or can we just partner in a waste management company and share the cost? When you choose Daryl Markin to sit on your council, I will work every day to help make sound decisions that protect families and businesses. I hold myself to high integrity and fairness. I have empathy for all residents, and I'll approach every challenge with the goal in finding balanced solutions that serves our community needs. Thank you.
Thank you. And when you're talking to the microphone, about three to four inches is how far you want to... If you stand back here, it doesn't amplify it. So about three to four inches, okay? No? Yes? Is that better? So just be aware of that. About, that's about three to four inches. Be closer, you can adjust height up and down. Yes, no? Is it better? Christian, did you turn this up just a bit? Yeah, okay, thank you. Next is Heather Eby, I believe.
Pretty high. Good evening, everyone. Well, let's take a little tour through Moose Jaw, shall we? Wouldn't a new sidewalk in every neighborhood be great? But a perfect sidewalk beside a road filled with potholes is disappointing, and a pothole-filled road is annoying at best to all of us. But when the infrastructure beneath the road is failing, it's pointless to repave it before addressing what is buried beneath that road. Investing in new underground infrastructure like water mains needs to happen first. However, if our reservoirs are not functioning properly, what would be the point of new water mains? And up-to-date reservoirs are ideal, but if the transmission line from Buffalo Pound is suspect, why bother? And if all those projects are complete, but the water treatment plant no longer meets requirements, well then all the rest is pointless. Fortunately, over the past decade, projects including the water treatment plant, the transmission line, the high-service reservoir, cast-iron water mains, valves, and service connections have made their way into the Capitol Works program via decisions of council. But there's one more critical facility that absolutely needs to be replaced. You know this morning, when you got up and you went into the bathroom? And you brushed your teeth and you washed your face and you had a shower, and you flushed the toilet? Well, all of that waste and water left your house, and then it left your neighborhood, and it traveled to one of 15 local area lift stations, and then down to Crescent View Lift Station, just south of the Par Three Golf Course. All 15 local area lift stations run into that main facility before going out to the wastewater treatment plant in the lagoons. Problem is this: Crescent View Lift Station was built in 1961. It hasn't met regulatory guidelines for years, and if it fails, and it very well could, well, it would be the Old Creek and No Paddle situation, for real. This lift station is currently a $66 million project with no government funding in sight. Your new council has some very difficult decisions ahead. This project takes precedence. Having experience at the council table will be imperative when tackling this major infrastructure deficit. The Crescent View Lift Station, along with all other Capitol projects mentioned, is 100% in council's purview. There are many other things that are not. Council needs to know what lane we are responsible for, and we have to stay in that lane. Drifting into the lanes of other levels of government becomes dangerous and unproductive. City council can support government and agencies with policies, bylaws, and representation, but we have to stay in our own lane. It's the only way to get to where we need to go. I respectfully ask for your support on November the 13th, and I will put my experience in the driver's seat for you.
Thank you. The eighth person today to speak to you will be Scott Montgomery. The eighth person today to speak to you will be Scott Montgomery.
Good evening, everybody. I just want to start by saying thank you to our organizing committee and to everyone in attendance tonight. It shows that everybody here cares. I guess hello, everybody. I'm Scott Montgomery. I'm a dedicated husband, father, grandfather, and a lifelong resident of the old MJ. My roots in the community run deep, from my days as an athlete proudly representing our city to over 30 years of coaching sports, where I've learned the true value of teamwork and leadership. It's been a couple chaotic weeks for my wife and I with the passing of her father, so the difficult time has reminded me that I am the importance of family in your community. Now it's time to get focused back on the path ahead with the City Council. I'm eager to bring common sense, commitment, and a deep love of this community to the forefront of the issues. Society, or pardon me, safety is at the top of my agenda. I believe a safe and secure community is a thriving one, and I'll work tirelessly to enhance public safety measures in the city. Transparency in government is equally important. You, me, we deserve to know how and why decisions are made and how our tax dollars are being spent. I will champion for open communication between the city, the council, and the residents that we represent. Fiscal responsibility has to be a cornerstone of strong leadership. I understand the concerns surrounding property taxes, and I'm committed to exploring solutions that balance quality services with fair taxation. And this includes advocating for efficient budgeting and reducing unnecessary bureaucratic hurdles that hinder business growth. Speaking of the business, I'm focused on fostering local economy and the ability to thrive. I will be pushing for reducing the red tape at City Hall that stifles businesses, making it easier for new and existing businesses to grow and flourish. This includes the obvious need to reexamine SAMA for fair taxation. Further on this, some of the policies within the city itself may be contributing to businesses' hesitance to operate in Moosejaw, and addressing these issues are both crucial for economic growth. I'm also aware of the concerns of external influences from organizations on our City Council, and as your City Council, I'll ensure that Moosejaw's voice is heard loud and clear, prioritizing our needs and values far above agendas outside. I'm running for City Council to give back to the community that has given me so much in my life, just like when I was the public announcer for the Moosejaw Warriors here in town. You need to trust me now to be your voice next Wednesday. Let's work together to make Moosejaw an even better place to live. Vote for me, Scott Montgomery.
Thank you, Scott.
Good evening and thank you for coming. My name is Michelle Christie, and I was born in Moosejaw at the Union Hospital. I grew up on the farm at Drinkwater, and my first job was with the city of Moosejaw as a lifeguard, very proudly. And then I moved into Parks and Rec, where I cut grass, I weed whipped, and we watered the main street, Seindale Park, we picked up cigarette butts off Main Street. And I worked in the cemetery. The pride our managers took and the integrity was something that they taught us, summer students. We knew there was high expectations. Mediocrity was simply not acceptable. Crescent Park was beautiful. It had swans and ducks grazing the waterways, and the amphitheater was alive with children and schools enjoying the space. Witnessing the decline of our parks and the city as a whole is very disheartening. As a candidate, I recognize the frustrations as us, as many of the citizens. And these changes need to happen, and I think with 24 people running, I think that we all can agree that we are looking for a little bit of change. I bring 11 years of experience as an operations manager for my parents' business, which is a business here in Moosejaw, which was Moosejaw V and Marine. I also have a degree in business administration, finance. My strengths lie in practical business experience and collaboration, fostering decision-making where all voices can be heard. In my view, the top responsibilities of the councillors are representing the interests of the residents, ensuring fiscal responsibility, the budget needs to be scrutinized, promoting transparency and accountability. When I talk about transparency, everybody's going to say transparency. I'm saying clear information about the decision-making processes and ensuring that we, as a community, understand what that means and how this affects us. Collaboration, groups working together with business partners, the council, and the administration. What I will do differently is come prepared to the meetings and ensure I do my homework. I'm not going to say that I know everything, but I can say that I will do my homework and I will do the best for the citizens. Moosejaw's vibrant Main Street and tourism sector is our greatest strength. I aim to protect and expand, fostering economic growth, streamlining the processes for local and new business. We must make sure that new ventures come and they do not get discouraged and seek opportunities elsewhere. This will create more jobs for everyone and entertain... I made that part up. I was going to say that it's going to entertain, creating more jobs and more competition for jobs. I had that line in a different piece of paper, but that's where I'm at with that. Finally, current council is, as Heather had mentioned, we don't know everything that current council, what is on the table and what is needed. We need to know as citizens what is out there and how important it is and how it affects us. My goal is to foster collaboration between the leaders and the citizens and the business community to work together. As a wife and a mother of two young children, my parents live in this town, my brother and his wife live in this town, I raised my children in this town, and I want this town to be where everyone can feel safe. And my vision and outlook for it is to keep Moosejaw the way it was, the friendly city.
Number 10 is John Adams.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is John Adams, and Moosejaw has been my home for nearly two decades. It's where I've raised my family, where I've built my career and grown deeply to care about the future of this community. I've been fortunate enough to work and raise my four daughters alongside my high school sweetheart and now wife, and that personal connection to Moosejaw is what drives me to serve. Professionally, I've been, I bring 18 years of experience in finance and accounting, paired with a decade in IT, two fields that have taught me the value of financial stewardship, innovation, and practical problem solving. As an entrepreneur running a couple businesses downtown Moosejaw, I understand both the opportunities and challenges that are facing our community. I interact daily with a range of people, from fellow business owners to our city's most vulnerable, and it's given me a perspective that I believe is crucial to effective leadership. My vision for Moosejaw is centered on sustainable growth and strong fiscal accountability. We need to prioritize long-term planning, ensuring that our infrastructure and services can support future generations without overburdening taxpayers today. Moosejaw is a city with a rich history and a strong appeal as a tourist destination, and it deserves to be showcased in the best light as possible. By investing in infrastructure and planning for the next 50 to 100 years ahead, we can position Moosejaw for long-term success. But this vision is not just about growth. It's about smart, intentional development that respects our community values and preserves our quality of life. I am committed to helping Moosejaw grow in a way that is both respectful of its past and ambitious for its future. As a council member, I would focus on maintaining transparent budget and seek alternative revenue streams to support our initiatives, ensuring we rely less on taxation and more on innovation. To support the growth, Moosejaw must be a welcoming environment for developers, and you've heard it a couple times tonight, streamline processes and policies to make Moosejaw competitive, and that will drive new investment in this city. We can offer targeted tax incentives, and we can make Moosejaw a place where businesses want to invest and turn everything into a win-win, win-win-win, when you have multiple parties involved. I'm running for City Council because I believe we need leaders that are proactive and accountable, leaders who don't just react to issues, but actively plan for the future. I've served on governance boards and understand the importance of transparency and public trust. As a council member, I would make the decisions in the best interest of Moosejaw, Moosejaw's residents, and they'll always be at the forefront of my mind. There will always be a long-term vision with me. There's no, I'm not a career politician, and I don't care about four years from now. I care about 20, 30, 40 years down the way so that my kids can be proud to call Moosejaw home.
Thank you. Next, I'm glad I talked before the night, Godwin Azizor. I've got to spell them right.
Good evening, how? Oh. Okay, my name is Godwin Azizor. I stand before you today with a deep sense of purpose and a heartfelt commitment to the future of our beloved city. I'm running for City Council to bring my unique global experience to the table, a perspective that I believe can significantly benefit this incredible community. With over 20 years in the oil and gas industry, complemented by academic qualifications from the University of Portsmouth, Saskatchewan Polytechnic, and Birkshire Seminary, I have developed strong visionary skills that I essential for effective governance. My journey has taken me to over 15 countries of the world for non-profit missions, enriching my understanding of diverse cultures and community challenges. As a former director of Saskatchewan Polytechnic Student Association and a board director of the Provincial Saskatchewan Soccer Association, I have a proven track record of public service and community collaboration. These experiences have helped to equip me to serve in council with transparency, accountability, and servant leader mindset. Those are the three core values that matters to me. I firmly believe that we need true leadership in this city. We could do a lot better. There's so much potential, there's so much opportunity in this city. I'm running for council to ensure that Moosejaw remains a vibrant and a very, you know, inclusive community where families and businesses can thrive. My agenda is pretty straightforward, three simple agenda. One, improving infrastructure for sustainable growth. I believe that for a tourist city like that we have, which is a strategic advantage that we have, our infrastructure could be a lot better than what it is today. And the second thing I'm running on is fostering entrepreneurship to strengthen the local economy. I understand that by reducing barrier and red tapes, which we've talked about today, we need to improve on our businesses. Jobs are created by businesses, and we need to focus on how can we get businesses to talk to the existing businesses to expand and then innovate with new startups for our community. And then the third point agenda is, or my three-point agenda is enhancing public safety through community-driven initiatives. You know, I think that every resident in this city deserves to feel safe in their neighborhood. In my observation, so I really, tonight, I'm just here to appeal to everyone of us here that I think I bring a very unique worldview to this city. And with all of my experiences, I come before you respectfully, humbly requesting that you consider me to be on the board with your other team so we can move this city forward for the sake of our children and for the unborn generations coming after us. Thank you.
Thank you, Godwin. Next, we'll hear from Jeff Cudna.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming, and I want your vote so I can serve you and make your vote a win for you. Last time I was on this stage was in 1979 when I was in drama class. I'm a third-generational Moosejawian, and my dad also went to this school as well. And, but when I got into the arts and film, I had to go to Winnipeg, where I went to the University of Winnipeg and studied psychology and got into theater and acting and film. And, but I remember being on this stage in 1979, and then I went to a community college in Moosejaw, and then I was in Lloydminster as a warehouse manager for the hospitality and restaurant and oil industry, serving a wide variety of products. And I believe that you need a strong product and you need, you know, a welcoming environment, and you need great, friendly, innovative customer service that is willing to take a risk on people to see the rewards of a great and bright future. And so I'm glad to be here today, and it's an honor. My wife is here with me, 30, over 30 years, and I've got three great children, all graduated, and some are in university and college right now. And so it's really great to be here. My vision for Moosejaw is a visionary vision. It's an optimist vision. It's a vision that I would enjoy, the benefits of taking calculated risks into an innovative future that builds bridges and brings in the world's best to Moosejaw. You know, I don't believe we're going to be the best city in the world, but we can have the world's best in this city. And so with innovative and working together and collaborating with forward thinkers, with the mayor and councillors, we can get the job done. I believe that we need to take action. Now is the time to shine. I believe that Moosejaw, you know, I was working in the city of Lloydminster for years, where I was a warehouse manager for Relay Distributing, and we serviced the industry there. And it was, you know, working smarter, you know, but opportunities do come with coveralls. You know, the city can give you an opportunity, but what you do with it will determine where you end up with it. What you put into your opportunity is what you'll get out of it. I'm a strong believer in smarter work and having the incentives that will motivate you in a positive way to do something with the future that's ahead of you. And so I believe in revisiting SAMA, like getting right down to the nuts and bolts here, and really being fair and equitable representation for the citizens of Moosejaw. I believe we need to recompense, I need to do some, we need to do some damage control for some of the outrageous tax assessments that have been given to the citizens of Moosejaw. And so I'm strong on that. I started a business in 2000, Coffee Encounters. It was a millennium business, and then we started a millennium family, and I just know the value.
Thank you, Jeff.
And thank you very much. Go to our website if you want to know more. Thank you.
And another thespian, Patrick Boyle.
Hold on, just wait. Thank you, Wow. My name is Patrick Boyle, and I'm running for Moosejaw City Council. Appreciate you all coming here tonight, the Kinsmen for putting on this event, and all the candidates here for coming. There's a couple things I want to talk to you about here tonight, folks. And the first thing is, why am I up here? And I've been asked this question a number of times. Why would you want to do this again? 12 years ago, I stood on this stage, and I was actually late because I was changing a diaper of my infant child. And today, what's changed is that infant child now is instead of giving me diapers, it's giving me attitude. It's a teenager. So we all have one of those. But it's the same reason why I'm here, is because I care. I care about this city. I care about creating something. And for you, and creating something different, creating a Moosejaw where you can be proud of, creating a Moosejaw that increases revenues, creating a Moosejaw that looks at our infrastructure a different way. We're creating a culture. It's not just what is wrong, what needs to be fixed. We can list all those things off, but it's a matter of what are you going to do about it? It's taking that next step in the evolution of our city. You know, we're all friendly people. Some of us were surprisingly unexpected, some of us were notorious. But the next question is, what are you and what do you want to be next in this evolution of Moosejawians? And we heard a lot about growth. I continue to hear the comments about growth, and what does that actually mean? We all talk about we want to grow economic growth and do those things, but I'm talking about real strategies. The Southeast Industrial Park right now is an untapped resource that we need to look at. We have food processing, we have agro-processing, we need to capitalize on the actual natural advantages we have as a community. We have the best farmers in the world, my dad is one, and we need to use that to our advantage. An agricultural hub of excellence, that starts in that economic growth journey. That also starts in creating a culture where our businesses can thrive, where taxation makes sense, where assessments make sense. We know we've beat that one to death already. But what I'm also looking at is not even just starting that growth and that journey, and it's more how you get there. It's not what you're doing, but how you're doing it. And that starts with the next thing, service excellence for you as a citizen. Most often times, you've come into City Hall with that permit, that whatever you're looking for, and you're that friendly Moosejawian, then you realize there's a roadblock, there's something, you're surprisingly unexpected. And then, you know, we don't want you to turn into that notoriously mad Moosejawian who can't get what they want from City Hall. We want you to have a good experience. We want you to have that same service excellence that you expect and you deserve. I think you should. You should, every single time you go into City Hall. It doesn't operate 10 to 4. You don't operate 10 to 4, you operate 8 to 5. And I think that you deserve that. So for me, it's three simple things: create, grow, and serve. That's what I'm here to do for you. I did it 12 years ago, and I commit to you... I did it twelve years ago and I commit to you again. I will give everything I have if you support me. So on November thirteenth, Oh Boyle.
Done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Tracy Zillman is our next candidate. And she's not here. That's the other one. Moving right along. Thank you, Tracy. But next person on my list is Carolyn Ross.
Good evening. My name is Carolyn Ross and I'm running for city council. I'm proud to be here tonight. Having spent over fifty years in Moose Jaw, I've had the privilege of raising four children and building strong local business roots. My family's entrepreneurial journey began in nineteen forty-five with our first local venture. And the spirit of entrepreneurship has been a constant in my life. Three of the business ventures still exist in our community today. Three of my children have chosen to stay in Moose Jaw, contributing to the community in many meaningful ways. My husband recently retired from the pawdash industry, spanning over forty-five years. He and I are passionate supporters of local sports, proud season ticket holders of the Moose Jaw Warriors. I also have been an active volunteer, serving on the Moose Jaw Little League Board, slow pitch national provincial coordinator, and supporting mental health initiatives like Journey to Hope. I deeply understand the needs of this community. My background as a safety professional with experience in government and nonprofits has strengthened my commitment to building safe and thriving communities. Additionally, serving as mayor of South Lake, I have, has given me invaluable experience in leading municipal affairs and making decisions that benefit residents. I would abdicate for city administration to develop business-friendly policies, streamline permit processes, reduce taxes for new businesses, and enhance collaboration with regulatory agencies and post-secondary institutions. I believe Moose Jaw needs to be seen as a business-friendly city, where city administration and council welcome new development and growth as well as supporting local businesses. This would include addressing the issues between SAMA and the community. I believe the city needs to evaluate the services provided by SAMA. City council cannot overlook the facts and errors that have been brought to their attention. I would abdicate for a third-party audit of the system to ensure transparency and accountability. I believe city council needs additional insight and a broad overview of the city's infrastructure needs and financial reality. An infrastructure plan would allow a multi-year blueprint for maintaining current and aging infrastructure while providing sustainable and affordable service delivery for residents. Crime and safety is a top concern in this community. Many citizens feel unheard by council and administration. I have been very vocal about the topic for the last year. Council status bring us a solution, which I have. Still, nothing has changed. My solution was shared at the Public Safety Meeting on July twenty-ninth. It involves a five-stream process designed to identify all community needs, connect individuals to appropriate services, and establish clear accountabilities for everybody involved. The comprehensive approach aims to enhance our public safety and better serve all of our residents. I'm running for city council to provide leadership that truly represents our community. I aim to be a voice for the citizens, ensuring that our community thrives socially and economically. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Number sixteen on our list, Stephen White.
Stole my thunder, Jamie. Hi, my name is Stephen White and I would like to say commentale vous. Comment est-ce que vous êtes? Comment est-ce que vous êtes? Miehama. These are many different ways that our multicultural town that we have here says, how are you? And the reason I ask it is because you've heard a lot these days, are you better off now than you were four years ago? I would ask, is your city better off now than it was four years ago? I've been campaigning a lot and going around to a lot of businesses in the town. And it is absolutely depressing to hear so many people say that if they could sell their business or lift it up and move it somewhere else, they would tomorrow. That is not a city that we can talk about, how do we bring new business? How do we bring new tourists? How do we bring to this? You, we have a fantastic tourism program that has brought tons of people to our city recently. Just reading through the books of all the people that have come, it used to be the destinations were Winnipeg, Regina, Calgary, Banff, something. This was a stopping point on their way. Now, if you look at the books, Moose Jaw is actually the final destination on those books over seventy percent of the time. They've done a phenomenal job of bringing it here. We've got to do the job to keep it here. We've got to do the job to go through line by line if needed to find out what has to be done to cuddle the red tape so that when you call City Hall, you get an answer. Not, we'll get back to you when we feel like it. I have friends that have done business in this town and waited two months for an answer to an email. Two months. Does anybody in this auditorium think that's acceptable? I don't either. And so the number one thing that we have to worry about this election is accountability. If we fix that, everything else will fall into place. Because then we can talk about properly fixing the infrastructure, not having to dig up High Street twice. How many people live on streets that had the potholes repaired three times in one year or more? That's not repair. That's patchwork. That's covering it up to make you feel good about yourself, not fixing the problem. If you elect me, I will show you many ways that we can not only fix the problems, we can make sure that they perpetually stay that way going forward by putting plans in place to replace things before they go wrong. You have to have a plan. And as a financial planner of over twenty years, that's all I did. We built plans for individuals and the businesses that they run and the businesses that I ran myself. If you elect me on November thirteenth, early if you like.
Thank you.
I would be glad to do that for you. Thank you.
Number seventeen is Ms. Dawn Looney.
Thank you for this opportunity. I stand here and I could tell you about myself for the next three minutes, but why would I do that? The role of city councillor is about our community, not me. Service above self. My career experience helps with my decision-making for our city. Owning a financial services business gives me the knowledge and business sense for the two roles that a councillor fulfills when elected. The first role is to look after your tax dollars through the budget process. The second is affecting change through policy development. Elected officials are in charge of governance, not operations. City council also only has and supervises one employee, our city manager. My priorities will continue to be our infrastructure, streets, water, and sewer utilities. First impressions for visitors driving into our city should be great roads. And infrastructure projects can be one of the largest drivers of a local economy. I will continue to press for a better snow removal process. If we really want to lengthen the length of our roads, we need to do snow plowing better and get the snow off of our streets. And I've pressed this in the past and I will continue to do so. Business attraction and retention are also always top of mind in order to continue to grow our city and our tax base. We need to focus on smart spending and value inefficiencies for your hard-earned tax dollars. We must improve communication between City Hall and residents. When you have concerns about day-to-day city issues, we need to have a better system for communicating resolutions back to you as the taxpayer. Council needs to partner with the police service and other local organizations to provide solutions for a safe and healthy community overall. Council, however, must recognize its municipal responsibilities versus provincial and federal responsibilities. Collaboration and creating positive partnerships with all levels of government and our local organizations is key to driving change to ensure a safe and vibrant community. Please call or text me. I will discuss all issues with you and if needed, forward your concerns to our city manager and work with her to follow up on its resolution. Let's work together. As an elected official, I am here to listen to your concerns and help where I'm able to. I'm honest, experienced, unbiased, and a proven leader. I will approach all city business and discussions with thorough research of all sides backed by my experience around the municipal table to ensure all our citizens are considered. It's time for us to affect positive change for our community. Your vote for me will do just that. Thank you all very much for your time this evening.
Thank you, Dawn. Our next person, number eighteen on our list, is Ashley Street.
Hello. Thank you to the Kinsmen for organizing this. Good evening. My name is Ashley Street. I am a business owner of Street Steakhouse. When it comes to local business, we have been resilient through the challenges life has faced us, including COVID and city issues. I am also a wife, a mother, and I'm passionate to help create the best place to live possible. A majority of you know that I am no pushover. Personality-wise, I have a hard time hiding my truth, but I have a sense of humor and wear my hat around my sleeve. With many years of worldly and past council experiences, we need a city administration, council, and mayor who can think outside the box, can think on their feet, and can get the job done. I commit to all of these with confidence. I am, I am as diehard as they come. I will not speak as to who I am for too long, as this takes away from the important reasons we are here. But I will give you two reasons I am right, the right person to vote for, to be on council. I have integrity. I am hardworking, just like the many citizens. I have worked hard for what I have. And I want my children to have a place to call home and to say, and make a life in Moose Jaw. The battleground we all feel like we are in is suffocating to the citizens and the businesses, and we need strong leadership to face these and not fall into the sinking trap that we have had to, have had to for so many years. I've spent many hours watching the council meetings, doing my due diligence and research, as I encourage all citizens to do. And the unspoken truth is, I have found discrepancies that have made me feel very uneasy. And the sad truth is, I don't think the true intention is on the agenda for most. For some reason, which I still have not had answered, is why the crowd-voting popularity and your friend is my friend voting nonsense process. I am disgusted that we truly do not have a democracy. Nevertheless, I am speaking my truth and I made a pact with myself that I will stay true to who I am throughout this whole election process so that there would be no surprises as to who I am and who I am fighting for, you. Success is built because of team players that work together. You are scouted for your skill, drive, and knowledge. Popularity and respect come later. You, the citizens, have a choice and your choice matters. Ask yourself, are we here for true change or to vote our friends in, or is this a popularity contest? I am here for the people and I would like to see a mayor that has fought for us and has experience. This is what will create change. Moose Jaw has given me in so many ways that this is the time for me to give back. And guess what, Moose Jaw? You've got a fighter and question. And the question is, do you want a fighter or do you want to trust me to fight this fight for you? So I ask you, if you agree with me and want council to fight for these key issues, public engagement, economic development, safety, properly calculated property assessment process, accountability, city accessibility, and two-term max for council?
Thank you.
Vote for me.
Thank you, Ashley. Number nineteen is Zach Wangshong.
As somebody with... Sorry. I'm sorry. I'll be straight up. I've been diagnosed with autism for quite a while. I was told, my parents were told when I was fifteen, I wouldn't graduate. I wouldn't have a family. I wouldn't do a lot of things. I went to the U of R. I graduated, well, convocated, I guess. I moved to Moose Jaw in two thousand eight for my now-wife. I had handy cards. Unfortunately, when your twenty-month-old is silent, it's usually not for good things. So, yay. I guess it's suitable that we're out of school and, well, it wasn't my dog that ate my homework. My campaign is how I plan on being a councillor. I want to, I'm sorry. Honesty, positivity, collaboration, and communication. I want to, I know I'm being elected to represent the city and its residents and I want to always have communication with the residents after I get elected. I want the city to be a place where my son, my other children, if I'm so lucky, want to have their families and I don't have to drive hours to go visit them like I do with my parents. But I really do love it here and I see a lot of potential. I went to university for political science, so hey, yay, I guess I'm getting some use out of it. I've advocated for myself and for others with disabilities. When you turn eighteen, a lot of things dry up for people and so they have a lot harder time talking about sidewalks, as someone mentioned. In a lot of the city, there's no ramps. Like when you come up to the end of the sidewalk for a street, there's no ramp coming down. So if you have mobility issues, you have to walk out onto the street. And that's dangerous, especially in the wintertime when, let's face it, we all know the snow thing. And that's something I would like to see changed. And sure, there's perfect sidewalks, but they're not everywhere. Sorry for, I'm trying. If it wasn't for my son, I probably wouldn't be up here because, yeah, he's why I'm running because I want to be that change. So I'm here to be the change. And I would like to thank everybody else who's here putting up with me. Thank you and have a good evening.
Number twenty on the program is Perry Hope.
I wiped the tears from my eyes right now. And it was, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming. Just want to give you a brief description of where I am. Perry Hope was at Old Briercrest, moved into town in the eighties and grew up here with my lovely wife here, Michelle. And it was, I'll just start off right now is, outlook and vision. Moose Jaw and like many cities, face several challenges and great negative negativity impact is community, well, sorry, community and environment. Some of these issues include taxes increase affecting homeowners and business owners, red tape at the City Hall causing lengthy approval processes for permits and renovations and businesses licenses. Addressing these challenges will require a commitment and streamlining processes, improving communication, and fostering more responsive policies and procedures. My vision for the city of Moose Jaw is to tackle these issues head-on, and this includes implementing user-friendly digital permit applications, systems to reduce processing time and improve transparency, streamlining the permit issuing and construction approval process. Another key area is infrastructure. I propose taking a fresh look at the city's capabilities in investing education and training programs aligned with local needs. This can help create a healthier, more adequate environment from administrative levels to the on-the-ground workforce. By focusing on these internal policies and procedural improvements first, we can build a strong, healthy foundation for the city. This in turn will support economic growth, attract future developers and contractors, and create a vibrant, thriving community for all residents. Once we address the in-house challenges, we can turn our attention outward, fostering a work environment, infrastructure, development processes that are efficient and inclusive and sustainable. Please join me in this walk. I will represent you for your council. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Perry. The second last run in the first round will be Jana Horstner.
One second. Try it over again a little bit. Thankfully.
No closer.
Closer.
Yep.
Oh, God. No, thankfully, it's not all about how we can talk and how we can speak, because I'm not a very good talker or speaker, but I'm really good for being the voice of other people and be able to stand up and help others have that voice. And so I'd rather be behind or lifting people up than standing up here. I was born and raised here in Moose Jaw. I've been here all my life. I've been fortunate enough that my husband is a historian, and he's showed me a lot throughout Moose Jaw. And I've enjoyed it so much to see all our parks and all our areas. And growing up on the farm, my parents taught me, you know, the value of hard work, you know, and standing up for what you believe in. My children are amazing. I've got all these grandchildren now. We all live in Moose Jaw, so I've been really fortunate. So I'm fortunate that I can now come to retirement, and I can do the things that I can really enjoy, and I don't have to worry so much about what I can get from Moose Jaw, but I can see what I can do for others. One of the most important things in the last few years that I've saw is that I've always enjoyed Moose Jaw, going down and watching my kids play sports, going to Crescent Park, going all over the place. And I've noticed the last few years just how scary it is and how things have changed. And I thought, wow, like, this isn't the Moose Jaw that I grew up in. This is, you know, my kids or my grandkids going, you know, like, in their breaks from school, you know, to some of the restaurants or stores. They're afraid. And it's not, it's not right. It's not right that our seniors are not being looked after properly. You know, we all go and we wear our poppies and everything else. But Moose Jaw, we didn't get here because of what we've done. We've done, we've got here because of the hard work of the seniors and the people before us. And I feel that it's up to us to carry that on. And so we shouldn't have people laying around on the streets, and we shouldn't have people living in places that, you know, aren't suitable for anyone to live. And then the truth is, if I left or did anything with my dog, I'd be charged, you know? I mean, we don't let our animals live the way that some of the people are forced to live, like here in town. I'm not saying I have all the answers, but I do know from over 35 years of experience in working with people and through all the different services that we have people here in Moose Jaw that have wonderful skills and abilities to help individuals. And we have to be their voice, and we have to support them, and we have to be there to let them do their work and find ways of getting this funding done, find ways. I know for a fact that there is lots of options that we have here that can help people. And one of the things that sometimes people say is they feel that they're bullied or they can't stand up and have that voice, because they're afraid of what people will say about them or to them. And I believe in a better Moose Jaw. I believe that we have what it takes. And I'm asking for your vote, so that I can be your voice. And I'm hoping that we can get together and uplift our organizations, our people, all the people that have worked hard and have, that are so smart, that can really change the city.
Thank you.
Okay. Sir. Thank you.
And our final person in the first round is Carla Delory.
Well, folks, this is it. This is the night where some of you will decide who you're going to be voting for. Now, I've spent the last few months researching city and provincial policies, our budgets, and I've met with many of you. I've been listening, and I have a plan. City projects need to be carefully researched through an Economic Development Advisory Committee. This volunteer committee is made up of two councillors, local experts with financial and legal framework, to ensure that any approval or denial is backed by the numbers. I will scrutinize the budget line by line, focus our resources on essential services and infrastructure. As mentioned earlier, the Crescent View lift station requires $66 million in upgrades, and without this lift station, we grind to a halt. Again, property taxes are too high and not fair to businesses of those with lower incomes. SAMA needs to be amended or replaced. SAMA has no liability for their decisions, and the city has to pay over and above for you to contest your property taxes. The process is confusing, and help is hard to find. You've told me you want greater access to city hall and council. I will reinstate pre-COVID hours, 6:00 p.m. council meetings, and no gatekeepers deciding if you can speak at council meetings. Councillors will be assigned to one of six city regions, and they will rotate every eight months to better understand your needs. Your voice matters, and I want it to be heard. You've told me you want more entry-level housing and not limited to just infill areas. I will expand this program citywide, incentivizing our builders and our homeowners. Developers want timely, more user-friendly permit approvals. They want to partner with city hall, not be in competition with them. You want safety. I will strengthen our bylaws and increase bylaw officers patrol our downtown and our parks. I've also been spoken to a lot about what's happening with our homeless and our food insecure citizens. And I'm so thrilled to see that groups have come together, again, with the backbone of the Moose Jaw people, filling in the need for feeding programs and outreach. And the city of Moose Jaw people can be very proud of who they are and who they take care of. I also want to support our homeless and food insecure citizens. I will create an advisory committee comprised of city councillors, our helping agencies, and those affected, to ensure that the city of Moose Jaw supports all of our citizens. The city will partner with our helping agencies, petitioning all levels of government for funding and programs. With the city's stamp of approval, this will strengthen their request. I will not be afraid to ask tough questions and challenge the status quo when needed. I want to see the reports, I want to crunch the numbers, and I want to be accountable to you. Together, we can make Moose Jaw an even better place to live, work, and raise a family. Please remember to vote.
Thank you. Wow, that was, that's really informative. I think you listening and hearing what they had to say certainly gives you some perspective on their points of view, their personalities, and their goals for, should they be elected and chosen to represent you on city council. So something I forgot to say thank you to is, I want to thank you, before we go into the next part, I want to thank you for putting your name out there to rerepresent the citizens of Moose Jaw and to be chosen to have that honor and responsibility. So thank you for, whether or not you get elected, thank you very much for doing this. Now, I'll leave the thank yous for later. In the event, I'll tell you the, but for now, we have a microphone down here, and that's for you. And if you have a question for one of the candidates that you would like clarification on, then you can come over, and you can sit in that front row as you're waiting, or step up to the mic and say who the candidate you would like to talk to or ask the question of, and then wait till they get a chance to come to the microphone, and then ask your question. Does that make, is that clear for everybody? Okay, so, go. Okay. Thank you, ma'am. And sorry, before you talk, could you say who you are?
Hi, everybody, my name is Chelsea Broom. I'm a seven-year Moose Jaw resident. My partner happens to be sitting up on this stage.
Thank you.
My question is for Heather. When you say "stay in your lane," it sounds like I'm going to pass the buck. I need to know if you understand that municipal government's role is to adopt bylaws to provide for the health and safety of their residents. So I think that most of the things in most of these platforms are, in fact, not an overreach.
Thank you.
I would like to know, are you going to pass the buck?
We're not going to pass the buck, but we're not going to say that we are going to fund, we're not going to fund a homeless shelter. And we're not. We can't afford, we have to stay, when I say "stay in our lane," we need to be using the tax dollars for the things that municipal governments are supposed to, which is streets, roads, water, sewer. That's what I mean by staying in our lane. And when we jump over and all of a sudden, we're going to be the ones, we're going to fund a homeless shelter, or we're going to figure out where a safe injection site is going to be, that is not where we should be at all. So no, I'm not going to pass the buck, but I'm going to make sure that we can do what we're supposed to do, and we can sit at the table and support the other levels of government or agencies like Square One or the Ministry of Health and Addictions who want to come and do a homeless shelter or a temporary shelter. They come to us and say, where, what are the, where can we build it? What are the options? That's our role. Our role is not to say, we're going to go pay for it. We can't.
Thank you. Next. Sir.
Alex Allen. Mr. Chair, could I ask two questions?
Okay, if they're short.
My first one is a follow-up.
Okay, thank you.
Is it not the city's job to support the initiatives of the citizens of the city, rather than to say no, or they're not going to do anything, particularly for the shelter?
I'm assuming, seeing as you were pointing at me, that that question was for me.
Well, I assume you spoke on behalf of council.
Okay, so which initiative exactly are you talking about?
Well, I look back to what happened with Riverside Mission. I never once heard the city say, this is something, we'll support those who are making the effort. Instead, I heard, you know, we don't really want them downtown. The mayor, even in his comments, the hotel was more important. But, but I mean...
I'm not speaking, I'm not here to speak on behalf of Clive Tully.
But council, I've never heard council step up. Saskatoon, Regina, both helped find a facility for the winter. I haven't heard that kind of initiative from our city. But shouldn't you be helping our city's citizens achieve these goals, even if it's just to put a good word in?
We did help, we were the ones who rezoned that property so that the Souls Harbor Mission could be there. So we did change, we rezoned that property for that exact reason.
Did you do anything to help encourage even the funding aspect? To say, this is where you might look, or say...
I'm going to just interject here for a moment, sir. You asked for two questions.
I'm just, I'm looking for clarity, is what I'm looking for, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, fine.
Okay, I'll accept that. My second, my second question is to any member of present council. As you know, if you've read your emails, I've sent lots of questions, but I've never heard back from you. Never, not even from the mayor. In particular, about business offers, nobody got back to me to explain why we open at 10 when every other community in this province opens between 7:45 and 9:00. We open later, but I never heard from you.
Thank you, I didn't...
Alex.
Just, yeah, take the, yeah.
I do not recall getting an email from you.
Well, then, the system doesn't work, because it sent back and said my email had been received by city hall. I never heard from the city manager or from one councillor.
Okay, because I don't...
The last time I heard back was from Chris Warren, and he hasn't been on council for a few years.
Right, well, I apologize if the emails didn't go through, but I honestly did not get an email to that effect about ours. So I can't answer it. But as I said in my speech, my cell number is out there on all of my websites, all my socials. Please call me, and we can have that conversation. So I apologize if I didn't get it, but I didn't.
Okay, thank you, good questions, thank you. Yes, ma'am. Sir? Sir?
I'm Michelle, and I just wanted to say, for your question and your question, which were similar in regards to the homeless shelters. I think what they're asking as citizens is, what was the plan for council? Is council's plan to say, we don't know what we're going to do with them, we're just going to let them be? Or are you guys actively going out and searching for opportunities to solve the problem? And I understand what you're saying, this is our lane, but that's not just the lane. There's shoulders on the road, there's ditches, there's all the rest of it that needs to be looked at. And I think that's what the citizens, and why there's 24 people here, because we want, people want to know that, what are we doing about it? So I'm not pointing the finger at anybody on council, but I'm just, I think, I hope I'm speaking what you guys were asking, that it's very narrow-minded to say that it's not when it is.
Okay, thank you.
I was told to be bold, so I'm going to be bold.
Doug?
Thank you. We did have a discussion at council on where a shelter could be placed. And there are certain criterias. I mean, no matter where we put it, people are going to be upset. They don't want it beside them, they want it elsewhere. But I mean, there are criteria that we did look at. We don't want it near a school, for obvious reasons. I mean, that's why you don't have a cannabis store beside a school. So we did look at various locations. But as was mentioned by my colleague, we don't fund these shelters. That is done by the provincial government through the John Howard Society. We have supported them, and we've tried to help them. I've been through the, I think a couple of councillors have been through the Willow Mission lately, and it was a good facility, and they do excellent work down there, but we can't fund it. I know Regina and Saskatoon, in the past, they have, they put money into it. But you have to remember, they get a lot more money from the provincial government than we do. So they have, you know, the funds to do it. We can't start putting money into it, because then we would have to start shutting down, you know, different projects like road repair, cast iron, you know, maybe the Crescent View pump house, which numerous have talked about. So we have to be very careful what we do with our money. We can support the provincial government, we can support John Howard or the Square One or whoever else. We supported the Riverside Mission, unfortunately, they decided to pull out. We didn't push them out. So, but we have to figure out where we can have a mission. We can support them morally, but we cannot support them financially. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am... Sorry, it's not, it's, I hope there's questions for other candidates, because it's really more fair that you hear from the new candidates. But I will just say something that Councillor Blanc reminded me of about Willow Lodge. I also, along with Councillor Loonan, toured Willow Lodge about a month or so ago, right after I had helped out with the pit count, actually, because I was very impacted that day. And that is, if anyone wants to know that story, please call me, text me, or whatever. I would love to share. I would love to share my experience of that day. But one of the things I thought of after being at Willow Lodge, and if I were to be re-elected, I actually asked the city manager about this, is if we could, as a city, partner somehow with Willow Lodge or John Howard Society to create some, I don't know, like, not employment, but help those, help, if they could help us do some things, and we could help them. But I mean, it is a fine line, because we can't be using taxpayer dollars to pay someone from Willow Lodge to pick the weeds behind City Hall. But perhaps there is a way that we can partner with them, but we haven't, this all just, yeah. We haven't got to that part yet. So, I mean, is that in our lane? I'm not sure. But we want to explore it, or I want to explore that, how we can partner together. But as I said, I hope that you would ask some of the new candidates questions so that you can hear from them. This is a good opportunity for you to hear from them. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll let her go, and then you, okay?
No, that's okay.
Kathy, go.
When you asked about, you know, first, you know, people who are up here as candidates, one of the things that I find frustrating, that the city council, I believe, is here to represent all the citizens of Moose Jaw. And I don't know how it came that it's our responsibility for all our businesses to pay and have the cost that's costing all our businesses, the cost that's costing all the families who are suffering because their loved ones aren't being looked after. All the costs are coming upon us as citizens. And I really believe that City Hall, that the city council should be finding ways and helping people work on this so that we don't have to bear all the things that the city is really responsible for. They're responsible to help us citizens. And personally, I really believe that's what we have to do. And if you don't know how, then you have to bring people together that do know how, because there's a lot of people even out here that do have a lot of ways of doing things. And we need to listen to them and hear their voices so that something can get done.
Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Barb Barrett, and I have a question for Doug, because it's something that has happened. So a couple of years ago, there were several meetings around the city, as we're all aware, from concerned citizens regarding some of the taxation increases. And that came about because of the assessments. So what are the tax tools that are available to the city that could mitigate the taxation changes we experienced? And were they implemented? And if so, what did they do? And if not, why not?
I thank you. SAMA does the assessment, and we just put on the mill rate. There was some concerns with the way SAMA was doing it, because some of the commercial businesses were, I think, assessed higher than they should have been, and some were assessed lower. I said at the time, I had some concern about SAMA redoing it, because all they would do is they would bring some down and put some up. So that in. We did ask for a review of SAMA. That is done, there's some legislation involved there, and that was done through the provincial government. That was denied at that time. For us to go any further, it would put us well past the tax year. Nothing could be done. How do we carry forward into the future? We need to look at SAMA. We need to review what they're doing, how they're doing it, so that it is transparent to everybody, both residential and commercial property. If that doesn't work, we could go to an in-house assessment, which was done before my time on council. Or there's other areas, I believe there's other municipalities that have done different things. There's a variety of areas we could look at to get our tax assessment fair and open so that everybody understands it.
Thank you.
Sorry, I just wanted to reiterate, this wasn't about SAMA. This was about tax tools that the government allows people to use to mitigate these changes. And if they were used, why or why not?
Well, there's lots of tools that people could use. I mean, when SAMA does an assessment, they send out a questionnaire. My understanding is, a lot of people don't fill out that questionnaire. So SAMA has no idea if there's changes to your building, you know, or to your establishment, your business, or your own home. That wasn't done correctly. And that is, unfortunately, is put on the residents, because they don't fill them out. Even myself, just since I've been on council, I've paid attention to that and filled out those questionnaires from SAMA. So there is some other tools that people can use. There's an appeal mechanism, and we have a company that looks after that appeal on our behalf and SAMA's behalf. So you can appeal your taxes. There is a tool for that.
Okay, sorry. My understanding was, when I read the legislation on it, that the provincial government supplies tax tools to, like, cities or municipalities that they can apply to mitigate the changes, to make them, like, over years ago, you know, maybe not so much every year, or even decreasing, that they could go lower. Sorry, this wasn't about SAMA, just what are the tax tools available?
Well, there is tax tools out there by the provincial government that we can utilize to help.
And did you or did you not use them?
Yes, I believe we did. I also believe now into the future, we need to look at... The provincial election is just over. The current government was wiped out in Regina and pretty well all of Saskatoon. We currently have two city MLAs. I think we have to utilize them and push them to get all the resources from the provincial government, not only to have our taxes reduced, but to encourage economic development into our city so that more businesses can come, and therefore that will give us more tax dollars and will help everybody.
Is this tax tool something that we can look up and find? Because the, kind of the, I think we're separated on kind of what the tax tools are.
Yeah, I believe you can look it up, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
No, sorry, she's next. No. Okay. It's your turn.
Good evening. My name is Dana Sebastian. I'm an international student from India studying SaaS polling technique. I'm in the final semester of project management. So my question is to, is one of the potential candidates, that what are the steps that would be taken by any one of you, if you get selected, to make Moose Jaw a wonderful place for newcomers like me, with also for people from diverse communities? Could you please answer for that, any one of you?
Who's that question addressed to?
That question is addressed to, I would like Heather, Heather Bay, to answer that question.
I think, just in observation outside, in retrospect, we're picking a lot on the councillors of today who are from last year's council. And I think you want to know, the new people who are trying to get jobs, what their points of view are too. I think you need to know that.
I really think it's only fair that the new candidates get some opportunity to speak as well.
Thank you, sir. I, yeah, I really wanted you to speak.
I know. Hi there.
Hi, sir.
I happen to be a little multicultural myself, okay? My wife is Filipino. My stepmother is Colombian. My sister lives in Switzerland. She's married to Lebanese gentleman.
Oh, it's really multicultural, sir.
So what you need to do as a multicultural individual, get involved, okay? We put on a, what's called the Synagogue Festival at St. Joe's or Church of Our Lady, depending on the year. And it's a festival for a celebration of the Christ child within the Catholic Church and the Filipino community. Everyone is welcome, not just Filipinos, okay? On November 15th, there is a multicultural dinner and fundraiser over at St., I want to say it ain't it? It's not, St. Andrews, sorry, I got the wrong A. St. Andrews Church on November 15th. My children will be dancing in it, representing the Filipino community, but there'll be many other cultures involved there as well. Please come, get involved. This is a wonderful city. There's lots of many things here. There are tremendously, tremendous opportunities to get involved, and we welcome everyone. First of all, I like the food, okay? So I'm never going to turn aside any cultural, because I'm always willing to try. It's delicious, okay? But get involved. People love other cultures and stuff in this town. It's very welcoming. When my family first came here, it was, it was literally the friendly city. We looked like a lost, a bunch of lost puppy dogs walking around town. And somebody came up to us, "What are you looking for?" People will reach out to help you all over the place.
Yes, sir.
Okay?
Yeah.
Now? Okay.
I maybe have a few statements in it.
Okay, who's it, who's your question for?
I have a few statements, and then I will...
Who's your question for?
Any new one, okay? Any newcomer can answer. My statement is this.
The point of this is to let them...
There's a lady in the back standing up, shaking her hand. She can go. How about her? That one. She said yes.
Please go.
Okay, my question is, who do you think is responsible for our roads and highways? We're told that we're to stay in our lanes. That is one of the responsibilities. My question is, who's overseeing that in August, on the end of August, first of September, our streets were being cleaned? They hadn't been cleaned before. We're ready for winter. The holes probably should have been filled, not the streets clean by then. So I'm just saying, who's in charge of that, and what would you do? Would you stay in your lane? As a councillor, if I called you or whoever else, would you do something about it?
Well, so my, my way of thinking is, like, I, I kind of think like a farmer, I guess, or common sense thought process, and time management, business sense. So when people are driving to work, for example, and you're following three graders, not the smartest thing. You want your graders to be out at night. I have seen big city centers, and they have their snowplows going at night so that the people can get to work in the morning, people. We all work mostly during the day, so we want the snowplows going during the day. There will be some small things that need to be done in the morning. That's fine. Turn the beepers off on the snowplow so people can sleep at night. I don't know how the processes are done in council here, because I'm not there right now. So it will take time to get, figure that out. But it's, it's just a, it's common sense. We need to figure this stuff out. And really, it's, once you check things off the box and you get that done, you move on to the next thing. It's, it's easy. It's a, the way I think is, everything should be ran as a business. And once it's ran as a business, I'm telling you, every, you've got, you've got your staff, you've got your, you've got your management, you've got your entrepreneurial thoughts, and your, it's solutions. You're coming up with solutions. And any entrepreneurial person knows this. They know that. They're creative. They're, they're not working against each other. They're coming up with ideas and solutions to fix things. And they listen to the people, and they figure these things out. That's what it's all about. And, and I know this was all about snow removal, but it's the bigger picture of things. And...
It was about potholes and...
Okay, and potholes and whatever else.
Same thing.
Uh, yeah. So my husband, I'm known for veering off on little things, but it is a bigger picture of things. And Moose Jaw is about 10 to 20 years behind other cities. And the unfortunate part is, is all the other cities around us are moving ahead in life, and we're not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. John?
Question for Heather. I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding.
Sorry, please introduce yourself.
I'm Johnny Atreides, 50 years old and lived here my whole life, and I think been in restaurants since I was about two years old. So my question is for Patrick, actually. I've heard a lot about the southeast corner and making that growing, you know, that creating business and industry for our city. And I'm just wondering if you, if you've ever looked into exactly how much, like, how much of a population growth and how much money that could mean for our city?
Well, thanks, John, and I wouldn't guess you a day older than 46, so. But I appreciate the question. So about the, looking at the southeast industrial park out there. So really, that was actually started when, when I was in council the first time, and was one of those initiatives you look at where, we have a couple of different things going on there. And we have affluent irrigation from some of the producers in the area unveiled it. So what that means for you is that your wastewater capacity is higher. So when you're talking about processing or food processing, a lot of that is wet or wet waste. So you need capacity for that, and you also need rail lines. And then what has been new since then, or something, you know, was a challenge at the time when I was finishing my first term on council, was how are you going to service that area? Because that was a huge cost. So since then, you know, there's conversations started, and the SaaS power plants come in there. So what that means is now you have the servicing, you have the wastewater capacity, you have a rail line close by. We're the closest community technically going down Sioux Line to the US. So there's a lot of logistical advantages. So what can you actually attract through that, John? And you can look at these different scale of processing facilities that bring, you know, 10, 20, 30 jobs at a time, depending on that. But then what we're talking about is that's real economic growth, because those jobs are good-paying jobs that result in, you know, people buying houses, they set up shop here, that growth and development. I mean, that's an area that has just a natural advantage. If you want to talk about sustainability, we're talking about using quite literally every bit of our wastewater, bringing it back into our system and using it for economic development. To me, it's the single biggest opportunity we have today to actually grow our economy here in Moose Jaw. You know, we like to talk about these things, but that, that is the, the natural advantage there, John. I think that we can do, we can add those jobs. And then it's a spiral effect. It leads to more things, higher taxation. At the end of the day, you know, we want to drive revenues, because we all talk about, "How are you going to pay for this infrastructure?" Well, you have to increase revenues, or you have to decrease costs. There's, there's two things. That's the reality. You know what? We can lobby other levels of government, and don't get me started on the federal government and funding. We'll be here all night. But I, I think that, to answer your question, there is a number of facilities that we could build there or potentially attract. If you look at what's happening in the world today, you're going to see an increase of a couple billion people in the next 30, 40, 50 years. So those people need to eat, right? We, we need to feed them. And Saskatchewan is strategically positioned that we have an advantage, that we can grow those foods and create markets to ship those. You're seeing it happen already. I mean, there's a lentil flower patch being built by Simpson Seeds out on the highway in Number One. I don't know if people know that, but you should. I mean, that's an amazing thing. So when I talk about that, I talk about creating an agricultural hub of excellence to do those things, to drive those businesses to come here. And then the other thing city council can do is create the actual incentives to draw them in. You have to incentivize that. They're not going to come here, right? We have to actually go and be aggressive and get them. And I think we need to commission our own report to target those industries and bring them in. Also, in addition to working with the Ministry of Trade and Export Development with the provincial government, there's a lot of things we can do. There's firms out there, the KPMG's, the MMP's of the world, they will go and help us attract those companies. But we can't sit here and wait and think, "They're just going to come here because we're the friendly city." We have to be aggressive.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lyle. Sorry, I didn't hear Lyle's 30 seconds. I was waiting for it.
So my question on this is, we have $7 million that's budgeted towards this, and that's our tax-paying dollars for this. So I guess my question is, is that we have no one that's going to buy any of these lots yet. And so we're going to put the infrastructure into these lots, and we have no one to purchase these lots yet. So why would we, why would we do that and budget for that, those lots, and put the infrastructure in when we have no one to sell these lots to? Are the tax-paying dollars okay with this? We have lots, and we have, we can bring business to this city right now. We, we had a pea plant that was supposed to go there, and what, oh my goodness, it's not there! Why? Why isn't it there? Because promises were made, and that didn't happen. So talk is cheap. I'm sorry. I teach my kids, you can talk the talk, but actions speak louder than words.
Thank you. Time on the time this time.
I'll just address that one second. Here's a prime example of that to answer your question, Ashley. Deefan Baker Drive is a great example of something where the infrastructure costs increase every year. Inflation hasn't crossed significantly. So when I was on council, there was a large debate about Deefan Baker Drive and servicing that area and those lots. And today, we have four hotels there. That is hundreds of thousands of dollars of tax revenues that pay for things in this community today. So why would we not want to pay for that today? Because in 10 years from now, it's going to cost that. Because why? I believe we can market and sell those lots and rope those companies, because that is where the world is trending and what they're going to need. And we have that to offer. Saskatchewan, we have the fuel, we have the food, we have the fertilizer. We hear that all the time. We hear that all the time. This is us capitalizing on that advantage. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Um, my question, this, my first question is to Dawn. And, um, I just want to say that it's, it's one thing for you guys up there to say that, um, you want to represent us. It's another thing for you to really understand the needs and the concerns of the people. So my question is this, um, as a, as a current council member, how is the council engaged with the residents to understand their needs and concerns?
Um, well, I'm always available to listen and hear your issues at any time. Call, text, email. That's what I'm here for. I truly believe that's what I'm here for as an elected official, to listen to you and to listen to what your issues are. I can't necessarily fix them for you, but I can give them to our city manager and try and help fix them and then collectively do that at council. But absolutely, if I don't know what your issue is, I can't help. And I see a lot of that on social media. And it's interesting. I've, I've commented on a few things on social media over the years and said, if you just phone me and tell me what the issue is, and suddenly the comments stop. Because I get the information from the resident and I try and follow up and forward that to the place that it needs to be so that you get some resolution.
Okay, uh, just to touch on what you just said, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding that, um, council could hold public meetings, errands and consultations? Is that one of the things you guys do?
I'm sorry, sorry, can you repeat that? I've got a bad ear in my.
Yeah, I said it's my, it's my understanding and correct me if I'm wrong, that council is supposed to hold public meetings or errands to be able to understand the needs of the people. Has that been done at all?
I'm, you know what? N- not very much, but I'm open to public meetings all the time. Like, I mean, we could, we could do that quarterly. We could do it every couple of months just to hear concerns. I think it's a great idea. Lots of politicians do those town hall kind of things. Why not?
Yeah, the, the major reason why I'm asking all of this is because, yeah, I'm relatively new to Muscha. I've been here for just about six years, right? And I've never for once heard of that happening, right? So I'm just wondering that how would you understand the needs of the people when there's no such thing taking place?
Yeah, it's a great question and a great idea. So if I get elected, I will take that. Honestly, I will take that and we should do them.
Thank you.
Often. Thank you.
Thank you. You guys are next.
So one of the things I, in the, in the cause of my campaign here, and I'm going to be a little bit, um, uh, straight up on this. And because of my campaign, uh, one of the thoughts that I felt from people were they're not getting heard. The ci- the residents, we're not getting heard, like issues. In my opinion, one of the things I think we need to do is the, the representative, the councillors are meant to go to the people, to talk to the people. One of the things I observed here is we have a lot of explanation about the, what has been done concerning the housing, homelessness and all that. And I think it appeared that a lot of residents do not have that communication that is needed. So, and I, one thing I thought about is, if elected, I think if we keep doing the same thing we're doing, we're not going to get a different outcome. We're going to have to have what they call out of the box thinking. So that's why it is pretty important here. If we maintain status quo, we get a diff- we, and expect a different result. So if, you, I had three values that I mentioned. I said transparency. Transparency means you, you open up the books, you talk to the people. Accountability means that you, you are held accountable. And part of the accountability that I, one of the things in my mind is maybe we need to revisit the ward system that is applicable in different areas where you are representing a ward, you are elected by the ward. We should have those conversations when we get elected. That if you, and then you come back quarterly to the people, you don't wait for the people to come to you and ask them what are their concerns? And then you deal with those issues. And the third thing is a servant leader mindset. Servant, servant leader means you are in service to the people. The people's problems are your problems. So you don't wait and say, and, and then you, the out of the box thinking is to go, what can we do differently? So I want to say without any kind of, uh, uh, that we have to think outside the world and do it differently for us to have a different outcome. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, um, I'd like to acknowledge the fact that, uh, we have young people too at this today too. And the reason we have young people is that their teacher said, we're all going to the coun- to the, uh, thing, they're sitting back in that corner. And, uh, good job, Ms. Stube.
Hi, my name is Madison Mark Tanner and I'm a grade 12 student at Peacock. My question is for Jana Horsnell. I noticed that you spoke lots on how older generations were doing more than any younger generation for our city and that they were more of a priority. I take offense to this as someone from a younger generation who works hard to be involved in our community. Could you clarify why you only believe, why you believe that seniors are a top priority and not the futures of the youth in our community?
Actually, if I had been able to read the whole thing that I had there, you'd see that youth is a top priority me, to me. My granddaughters and one of my grandsons too, who are your age, you know, I've got two in grade 12 over at Central that are just graduating. And so it's important to me that as a city, that we have all these places for them to not just graduate and go to school, but be able to come back and live here in Muscha because I believe that Muscha is the friendly city that we have so much to offer, whether it's tourism or the, I think there's just a lot of different types of businesses that I've heard from youth because I got to help out at Central, um, a few years ago. And they've actually, the youth, they're the grade 12s. They really gave me that desire and reminded me about the history of Muscha in some of those classes when I was helping out. So I'm really sorry. I certainly don't mean to offend you and, um, yeah, my, the youth is very important. And I really believe that you guys are the next generation. You guys are going to make a lot of the changes. And so I'm really wanting to uplift, like all of you. And I think that we can all come together because I think seniors can also mentor a lot of the youth and the youth can teach us, as you're doing, like at least as a grandma. My kids are, or my grandkids are always teaching me how to use a lot of the technology. So I apologize. I did not mean that.
Thank you. And what are you going to do to try and benefit our youth? So in many of the classrooms that I have, I'm in a lot of diverse classrooms where there's a lot of different like financial state within families. And I want to know what you're willing to do or any of you guys are willing to do to try and help us with the growing prices of schooling and other, other like education sources out there, what you can do to try and help us move on with our futures.
Okay, do you want me or do you want somebody else?
Ah, anybody who has a good response to my question, maybe.
Okay. Do you want someone else?
You, you're fine.
I just don't want to hog the, hog it here.
You're it.
Okay. No, I think that a lot of times that one of, one of the ideas that I've heard and, and I really think is a great idea is some of the buildings and stuff that are, n- need a lot of help, that there's a lot of people that are taking different classes, whether it's, um, you know, different, um, like welding or there's just a lot of skills that they can be using to help. And, um, whether it's through apprenticeships or different things like that. I also believe that the city council, like with taxes and stuff, that we can give tax breaks. We can do things that can make things more affordable for people. And I think that there's a lot of great, um, organizations that are also helping people get into different classes. And I think that we should be able to help people find out what's available. Work with the city council, like there's the school councillors and the city together. So I think there's a lot of, lot of, um, things that we can do in the future. And, um, but I do believe that there's a lot that's, uh, we can work on.
Thank you.
Does anybody else want to answer that?
I'll just touch on that just a little bit, actually. Myself, uh, the youth is a huge part for me. I've started coaching at the right age of 17 years old. I was going to this school right here, the old AEP. And I got into coaching because youth is so important. It was my brother who was 10 at the time. And that's literally been my entire life. I've coached 30 years. Girls fastball, boys baseball, AAA Canucks, all the stuff. I was the president of Muscha minor football and on the board for 30 years. Youth is so important in the world. Um, you know, I'm getting a little longer in the tooth now. But, uh, it, it's such an important thing and I think it's important for us and for everybody else to be addressing because there are challenges for the youth that we may not see. Um, myself, I do because I have kids that I've coached come up and say, hey, coach, you got to hear this. Uh, so it, it's something that needs to be addressed. And I think one of the important things for us is just to sit, you know, sit and listen. We all, we all see different challenges. You know, you guys are trying to get through school, seeing the effect of rising economy, et cetera, and else. And, and you know, we're trying to, some of us are trying to pay for you guys to get through. And, uh, you, you know, it's important for everybody to sit down and just chat. When, when people lose the ability to have difficult conversations, that's when the world goes into chaos. Uh, whether you're, you know, in the US, you look at it, whether you're red or blue, they've lost the ability to communicate. And when you do that, it's a disaster. Um, our generations, the older generations, the younger generations, we all have to come together. And for myself, I've always said, you know, I, I joke with my wife and I said, you know, I'm off every second Thursday at the co-op and I've always said, I'm just going to have coffee with the councillor down at the hive at about 11 o'clock. Anybody wants to join? So I, I think it's important for the youth to be there. I think it's important for your teachers maybe to give you guys an hour off in the morning to let you do those type of things. Maybe some credit, you know, a, a, as much as it's a joke, it's important for you guys growing up and to be able to do that too, right? And what better way to stay involved and stay in, stay in the in, right? So that's just my two cents.
Thanks, John. Now your turn. You introduce yourself.
My name is Scout Panko and I turn 18 on November 13th. So I'm pretty excited to get to use my voice and vote. Uh, my question is for anyone. It's regarding safety in Muscha. So I work as a lifeguard. Um, in the summers, I work at Crescent Park. I've been stalked, catcalled and threatened because of the homeless people there. Um, part of working as a lifeguard in Crescent Park, you have to lock up the bathroom, the public bathrooms that are, um, like by the park. I've had to do first aid on people who were shooting up in the bathrooms. I've had some pretty horrible experiences. And as a young woman, I'm not allowed to walk to my car without a male beside me. I'm told that I have to park in certain places, especially when I'm doing the night shift because it's not safe for me. And I just want to know, like, what is anyone's plan for safety regarding that?
Uh, thanks for the question. As I said earlier, I do sit on the police commission and the province just announced eight new positions. Now those positions are not going to be started instantly because unfortunately the recruits have to go to the police college, which is at the University of Regina. And that's going to take some time. But we are there. One of the areas, and I know it's not yours, but I'll get to yours in a second, was the internet, the child exploitation. The province was paying for Regina and Saskatoon and Prince Albert, not Muscha. And we've been lobbying for four years. Why aren't you paying? The answer I always got from the ministers was, well, they exchange information. I know they exchange information, but you're not paying for Muscha's. We had two officers that were doing this, equivalent to about one full-time position. With these eight new positions, one of them or both of them are now going to be doing the child, uh, you know, pornography and going after people. There's also going to be more officers out on patrol. Uh, we've issued, uh, it was, it was talked about here earlier. I believe one of the candidates talked about the in-camera reporting, which is going to save time. So officers are going to be on the street. We have had, and I've pushed hard, that we need to have more patrols out on the, the downtown core and Crescent Park. And that has been agreed to by the chief of police, that that will happen over the next time, the next number of months. They've, uh, we've purchased new, uh, pedal bikes, mountain bikes and e-bikes so that the officers can, uh, patrol Crescent Park and our downtown core. Is it going to be fixed overnight? Probably not. But it's going to be looked after and you're going to see more police presence there. We have the no trespassing rules downtown, which has certainly helped because now the police can actually go after people that are lounging on property and saying, what are you doing here? Because you're not supposed to be here. We've initiated the shopping cart rules. And I know people laugh at that, but I mean, a shopping cart is worth $300 to $400. And when these people are pushing the shopping carts around Crescent Park or all over the city, the police now can stop them and say, you're not allowed to have these shopping carts because we have confirmation from all the businesses in, in Muscha that have shopping carts, you're not supposed to have them. So our police per- presence is going to be more, uh, visible in Muscha. And I always encourage people, if you see something, phone the police. Because quite often I've heard the statement, oh, well, they won't come anyways. What's the difference? I've had the opportunity in the last, uh, couple of months to phone a few times and they've always responded. And they're not responding because I'm a police commissioner. They're responding because I'm a resident. Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, thanks for the question. I'll be brief. Um, first of all, I would have been very happy to know, to have known what was going on with you. Um, again, going back to what I said, my number is out there, my email is out there because if I don't know what's going on, then I can't help you with that. Um, so I am absolutely in favor of better safety in the city. Um, and working with the police board, if I get elected and have an opportunity to get back there, I, that is going to be one of my first things. Because honestly, I think that the police should be just downtown with their cars parked. This is just an idea that came to me, but and if they have to go somewhere else to another serious, they can get in their car and go. But let's get the presence downtown where we need it, walking around on the beat. But I just wanted to point out that if I would have known, um, and I'll say that to anybody, if I know what your issue is, then I can work with it. And I can take it back to the people that we need to get something working on to get it fixed. So thank you for asking.
Three. You're third.
I've been fairly vocal about safety in this community. I went in front of city council, December 18th, 2023. And I talked about these incidents of people, kids, 16-year-olds being chased when leaving their part-time jobs. Business owners not getting out of their vehicle because of threatening behaviors. I offered the letters and the contact information to council. I went back again a couple of months later. What's changed? They wanted a solution. I brought a solution. What's changed? Nothing. So they know what's going on, but now it's a priority because we're in an election?
I view this a lot differently from a lot of people in that I'm looking at it from a perspective of, when I was a child here in the eighties, we had regular police patrols going through that park. And when they would come across people, they would find them resources and get them help so that they weren't in the park. And we've gotten away from that a lot. We've put a lot of wants ahead of needs. And what we need is effective policies to reduce poverty, to reduce homelessness and to reduce addiction in this town. And yes, it is, it is provincial government purview to deal with that, social service and healthcare. But in the absence of that, we as a municipal government have to step up to the plate and find solutions for this. And policing is one aspect of it, but we have to make things affordable for people. We have to offer housing for people. We, this is a case in point argument for safe injection sites and temporary homeless shelters. It 100% is. 100% it is. Because where are they going to go if they don't have them? They're going to go to the parks, they're going to hang out in Tim Hortons and sleep, and they're going to go into the fast food joints, into the, into the bathrooms. You need places to house these people. You need places to help these people get the services that they need. That's, that's the reality of it. You, you can say no, but that is the reality of it. You need these programs and you need these services to help these people. Otherwise, the problem doesn't go away. You can take the services away from the downtown core, but it doesn't take homeless people out of it. That's the reality of it. And we're seeing that right now. Like, uh, it, that's it. We have to step up and help people and make, make it so that they don't have just that to go to.
Thank you, Jamal.
I get it. But I think in summary, you know, I listened to it and it's, you know, I think that's why we see 24 people running for council is that we're, we're, we've had enough of, well, when I get on, I'm, you've had the time to be on the council. Nothing's been happening. So people ask, Daryl, why are you running? It's like that. I, I know exactly what you're saying because I had a cousin, exact same thing. I'm not going to Crescent Park. As I grew up, Crescent Park was beautiful. It wasn't green down the tr- the, the trench, right? And I've heard it in, 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 in the, the newspaper. And I've heard it in, 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 in the, the newspaper. We, we are not going to clean out that. Well, because no one will go down there, it's become an cesspool of people, that's where they go. Well, if you, if, if it's us as council, find activities, get it back to life. And I guarantee you, as more people go and take their walks and put the lights up, right? We, we will, we, we won't see that, right? They will, they'll move somewhere else, which we, we, our goal is to help them, but we have to as a council, find ways to create some activity down there and make it, whether it's fireworks at eight o'clock, whatever, but bring everyone in there. Right? Because they don't want to be around, you know, activity. It's there because no one will go in there and they chase you out of there, right? So it's, it's up to the council, and that's why I think we're here, is to find a solution. And I think they're out there. The, the solution is out there. And it, and it's bringing more activity. And it's, and as a council, instead of us saying, well, we're going to, we're going to wait to see what we're gonna do. And if you elect me, I'll do it. I'll be here in four years if you elect me. I hope I'm not saying the thing. Well, I hope that if you elect me, this is what's gonna happen. Now, we're gonna make it happen now. And, and, and people like yourself, we don't want you to leave Moose Jaw, right? I left and I came back. And it's a great place to raise a family and we're gonna get back to there. So we would hope you don't leave. I know you gotta go back to school, but we want you back here in Moose Jaw. And we'll, and we'll find solutions and, and, and get it back to where it was before. Thank you.
Hi, Madison. Uh, just a side note, Madison, what was the name of that, uh, ice cream shop you guys opened? A Good Scoop Ice Cream. The world needs more Madisons. Okay? They started a business that was made for charity and that's the type of people we need. And there is a youth uh, council, advisory council in City Hall. I would suggest you signing up for it because you got a lot of great ideas. Um, on our street that I have lived on for the past sixteen years, there was, the other day, there were seven squad cars, snipers on roofs, guys with guns out, all to get a criminal that they've been chasing around for, oh, better part of six months. The guy was literally cornered on both ends of the streets one day and sleeping in his car, cause he got high, right in his car. And this guy took off when the police sirens wanted to get him. He drove up on the sidewalk and got away because the police are not allowed to chase him. Okay? So the police department has an incredible amount of their hands tied behind their backs to help you with situations like that. I've got two young girls, one of them right over there, sophomore. I watched Madison and her stand on top of podiums when they were doing cross-country and other things for many years. Um, and I want my kids to be safe too. I don't wanna come out and see seven squad cars in front of my street because the police officers can't do their job. And all I ever hear is, well, it's the province's problem. It's the national government's problem. It's our problem. We are the ones that need to find a solution so you don't have to feel unsafe going to your car after a job. And that means that we need to fight back against the federal government and the province and say, these rules and laws aren't working for our police officers. They can't do their jobs. They're frustrated as we are with the crime because every time they turn around and get one of these guys, they're released by the government. Okay? I want you to feel protected. When my daughter goes off to school next year in New York City, I want her to wanna come back to Moose Jaw to be a doctor. Not, I'm never going back to that place because it's not safe. Okay? We need to start doing our job. It's not just the federal government and the province. Sorry. There's one more response and then
Sorry.
I'm closing it down for the
For those of you that have been
Okay.
Watching my Facebook or following my Facebook, um, you would notice that I have been posting some of these municipal or the, the council meetings and to show the behaviors, show what's been happening and some of the answers. And, and one of them was when Carolyn Ross was at one of these meetings. And some of the behaviors of council was disgusting. Because we, we're talking about, um, well, you know what, you as a business owner, you, you know what, you can just shut off your wifi, you can shut off your power. And you know what, you need to be the one that needs to do this. Um, you know what, I can sleep at night and I can ride my bike and I feel safe. How is that okay? We as citizens, we, we pay our property taxes here. And, and that Crescent Park, for example, we, we paid to have it beautified. Our tennis courts are there, our library is there, our everything, our downtown tourism. This is, this is happening, I understand, in every city. But we need to be leaders here. And I understand that we've got the hoops of the provincial government, we've got the hoops of the federal government. But you know what? We need to put a bylaw in place. And enough's enough because by the time
Not me. I think there's a Thank you. What, uh, batteries dying? I know it was long, but Jamal's a mechanic by trade. Takes two guys to change two batteries. Well, I'm, while they're doing this, I just wanna say, what good, interesting inspiration you guys have got with your questions today. Nicely pointed. Um, make sure that you, uh, Madison, you come see me. We'll talk about youth advisory, okay? Thank you, Christian. Okay. Uh, sorry, just a sec here.
Would I be able just to
This is a rebuttal.
Kind of. It's just something that I kinda want to
Okay, cause we do need to keep things moving along, but I'm certainly gonna allow you to talk. Okay, go ahead.
So like from my perspective, a lot of the
Who's this to address to?
Anyone.
I don't know. Pick somebody.
Uh, who would want to answer this question?
Dave.
I saw a hand raised in the back.
Zach. Can Zach come to the front of the mic?
Hi. Alright, so I feel like a lot of the problems that I dealt with is homelessness specifically in Crescent Park and drug use in Crescent Park. When someone would overdose, it's my job to take a can of Narcan and save them, which not only puts my life in danger, but also everyone who, all my coworkers that I'm working with. And I just wanna know, like, what's the plan for homelessness that is in Crescent Park?
Okay, a little closer to the microphone, Zach. Thanks.
Oh, boy. It's gotten shorter. Um, that's good. Thank you. Um, I think it, a lot of it plays into concerns that were raised earlier about affordability and things like that. Um, one of the things I've heard about, um, sorry, there, better? Whoa, yep. Um, one of the things I've heard of from other people is about affordability concerns and things like that. Um, I think if we address a lot of those issues, we'll see a lot less homelessness. Um, if we push for affordable housing, um, expanding transit services so that people can actually get to their jobs at night or on the weekends, um, it'll help a lot. When I was going to university, they were handing out Narcan kits like candy. Um, what they told us if we weren't comfortable was always to call nine-one-one. If, especially if you're younger and you're unsure, always call nine-one-one and the paramedics will show up. Um, it's why with, like with Jamal said, um, I think a safe injection site is something that would benefit this city. Because it will pull people from doing drugs in random places, putting you in unsafe situations where you have to make hard choices that you really shouldn't have to. And it puts professionals in those situations that are far better able to handle those situations.
Thank you, Zach.
I've tried to keep quiet, but, uh, you know, it's unfortunate that you went through that. Um, I would hope that you're trained properly, but at the end of the day, you can phone nine-one-one. Really surprised by the negativity seems to be the new positive here and that's kinda disappointing. You know, uh, the homelessness issue, yes, we need to find a solution. We need to be uh, part of that solution, not the problem. And, and what I'm hearing is that we, we seem to be part of the problem and, and that's disappointing as well. Uh, nobody woke up in the morning and said, you know what, I think I'm gonna be a drug addict or I think I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be homeless. I don't wanna, I don't wanna live in a home. Uh, addictions are an issue. Uh, mental health is a big issue. And a bigger problem is, is that I think the government of the day has, uh, has really, uh, let things slide and not provided the proper funding, the resources for people when they do want help uh, with their mental health and addiction issues to get the help that they need. Having programs in place, there's just not enough people, uh, professionals to help people when they need to, to get that help or when they're ready to get that help. Uh, unfortunately, that then falls on to the municipal governments to deal with that. And that's where we need to be more effective in lobbying the government to provide fundings for all these programs. Uh, there's, you know, a good program, uh, in Regina, uh, Feeding's Residential Homes, which has, has had some successes in dealing with the homeless, homelessness issues and addictions and mental health issues. And, and I think we could learn, uh, a lot from those, those individuals. Uh, Square One is, is another grassroots place. And we really need to communicate with those peoples and the professionals, the police, all that, to find a solution so that people aren't fearful in our city. And I think that's the better approach to take than just saying enough is enough. We need to work and find a pro, uh, solution to this epidemic that has happened in our city.
Thank you, David.
Hey, my name is Patricia and I'm gonna direct this to Doug. And I know the new candidates are here, but it's regarding an issue, uh, that, that the present council brought in these, this Wallace Insights back in, I think it was in December or early two, twenty twenty-four. I wanna know if the, the ideas from Wallace Insights is still on the table for Moose Jaw. Because I don't like it. It screams fifteen-minute cities is what it does.
Wallace, uh, yeah, at Saskatoon has done a couple of things for the city of Moose Jaw. And as far as I know, they're still involved in a couple of the issues to deal with them and come back with a report.
Okay. Cause, because the, the new city council then will be having to deal with that, right?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I just thought, a statement? I don't know if, oh.
I would really recommend that people get, inform themselves on this issue. Um, because I've actually really equipped myself, informing myself. Um, because it, it's bigger than what I think people think it is. Um, I think people just think that it's, it's just these people with tinfoil hats or they, they just think, oh, well, they're just people that just want, don't want the COVID jab or whatever. And you're just a crazy person. No, you really have to do your research on this. And I'm a business person, I'm a mom, I'm a wife, I'm an average, normal citizen. And I know how to run a business and I'm seeing things that I don't like. And I was a farmer. My husband and I farmed. And if we like the way things are, um, as far as having our freedoms in, in certain ways, I really feel that everyone should do their research on things. I really do. Um, because you will be more informed on these things.
Yeah. Uh, adding to what Ashley just said, this open forum with this Wallace Insights had a very poor, oh, uh, people, uh, very po, very few people came out to see it. We have got to get more involved, what is going on. And I just wanna make a comment. If any of you on stage or any of you in the audience, if you know what Bill C two ninety-three is about, you better get involved.
Thank you. Sorry. Uh, are you wanting someone behind? Yeah. You're next after him. That's all. He's been hiding in the wings.
I've been hiding. Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. My name's Dr. Cody Sharp. Dave, my question's for you. And I'm glad that you've already got up to the mic once, so you've got those jitters out. Here's my question. Dave, the city of Moose Jaw recently completed a cultural action plan after spending several years engaging with local businesses and nonprofits. As cultural tourism is so important to the city's economy and image, what specifically would you like the city to do on growing cultural tourism?
It might be a little tougher than you think, I guess, to answer that. Uh, on the multicultural themes, is that what your question is? Well, I, I mean, I think obviously I need to see the report. I, I, like, I'm not familiar with it, so I, I'm not sure. But, uh, I believe in inclusiveness and, uh, we need to do and be representative of our population. A representative population. And I do think that, uh, you know, I, I can remember going to the Caribbean days and the suppers and all that. And then, and, uh, you know, going to Mosaic, uh, you know, many times over the years. And I think that's something that we should be promoting within our city. It brings people in, brings a cultural in, uh, aspect of it in, and people can see what great things we have to offer, uh, in our city. I mean, I just spoke with a person, uh, the other day, international person, and they were traveling on their holidays, came to Moose Jaw and they decided to live in Moose Jaw because they thought it was a good place. So, I mean, with some of the services that we have, so I, as far as a plan, I'd like to see that, but I would definitely promote the, uh, multiculturalism uh, in our city to represent all the people that we, we represent.
Thank you. Your name?
Hi, my name is Shannon Simpson and this is for the president council that's running again. On July the eighth, I sent an email to all of you, plus the mayor, Clive Tolly, um, and basically addressed the concerns that Scout Panko had, plus about two thousand other citizens of Moose Jaw, their concerns. I did not get one email back and you guys all said that you would basically give, text you, email you, and you will give us a call back. I don't feel like that is what's happening. So at the bottom of my email, I said, how can we as citizens feel heard and feel like we matter? how can we as citizens feel heard and feel like we matter? And one person emailed me back, and that was Kim Robinson.
Thanks for the question, Ms. Simpson. When I say that I want to speak to you about your issues, I mean it. However, I actually appreciate what Mr. Stephenson said earlier. Because over the last four to five to six months, it's been nothing but negative comments and throwing daggers at the city council because we're not doing enough. And frankly, I'm not going to answer an email back that just gets us into a, into some kind of argument. Because that's how I felt. I can't speak for the rest of council, but I've tried to explain my situation or my role there and what I can do to help or try to help. And it just feels like it's being, it's fallen on deaf ears. There's only so much we can do as an elected municipal rep. Should we be listening to you as citizens? Absolutely. But I'm not, I don't want to get into an argument. We need to be more collaborative. And it's what I said in my three-minute speech, let's work together. But I, I believe that there is so much animosity right now about issues that are all over the place that maybe we do need that town hall meeting and more collaborative communication. So I apologize if you feel you didn't get the answer from me at all. Because you're right, you didn't. But I feel like we just can do no wrong. And we, I try to explain my position there and what I try and do, and it seems to fall on deaf ears as well.
Mine might be considered a tinfoil hat question. It's for Patrick Boyle. Sorry, I have to take my glasses off. The World Health Organization, the World Economic Forum, NATO, the UN with its sustainability goals are all unelected groups that influence the decision-making of government at every level. Please explain to me how we, you will work to remove the influence of these groups from our government's decisions.
Thank you for the question. And I was going to ask Lyle for a bathroom break because I just pounded that whole bottle of water. But I'll go right into your question here. And I guess I take it as influence of outside sources into how we make decisions here in Moose Jaw, is that it? So the way I look at that is, for me, that, you know, I make decisions based on what I think is best for, for the citizens here and how it would impact my family. So when I have an outside source, usually my radar goes off. And typically, when someone is telling you that this is so good, you should do this, follow these rules or do those things constantly, like a certain federal government does with a carbon tax, I call BS on those things. You have to do your own research and look into those and understand what's going on. Because the fact of the matter is, some of those larger scale organizations, they're not in Moose Jaw, Saskatchewan. I'm in Moose Jaw, Saskatchewan. I understand what's going on here. I live, work, my family's here. The Boyle family's been here for 100 years. I know what's going on here. I don't listen to a lot of the outside noise of what's going on. We have to listen to what's happening here on the ground to our people and respond accordingly. So for me, a lot of that is stuff that I don't even factor in the decision-making because I'm going to listen to the people that are in this room and hear your concerns and make decisions that are informed and the best to my ability. And that's really all I can give you. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Penny.
I have a question, Patrick, towards that. My question for you is, you're very good at speaking. So I just want to give you that, very good. So my question to you is, with that, I'm a business owner, and so I know how businesses are ran and I know how to budget and I know how to, I know how economic development is done and all of these things. Have you ever had to do that? Or do you have outside influences just influencing you on these issues? Is that how you're making your decisions on your feelings towards these things? Towards even like this industrial park?
Okay, Mr. Boyle?
Well, I didn't realize there was open mic on the other councillors here, but I'll answer the question, so. So just a couple of things with that. So I grew up 11 miles southeast of Moose Jaw. Our family farms there and we still have the farm today. So I grew up in an entrepreneurial family. That's what we do, we still have it today. For me, in budgeting in my day job, we have about 12 employees with our own significant budget that I do and run on myself every day within the Water Security Agency. So yes, do I know budgeting? Yes, did I grow up in entrepreneurial family? A farm-based one and has those values? Absolutely. And to answer the other question on that, outside influence resources, the only outside influence resource I have is my wife. So that's who I answer to today. And my kids and the family and what we're going to create here in Moose Jaw. So if we have any more questions, Ashley, please ask them.
Thank you. No, thank you.
Do you have red?
No. Thank you. Mr. Penny?
Thank you, Lyle. My name's Ernie Penny. I've had the opportunity of running for mayor in the city, running for council in the city. And if I ask a question to everybody here, do you think six councillors are enough? I know the answer would be no. And that, now, I'd like to ask the councillors that are, have, like, Dawn?
From the current council.
The current council, yes. If they feel six councillors are enough? Or do we go back to the history when we had 10 councillors? Or eight councillors? I'm old enough, I'm 61 years old. I remember the argument that was when we had 10 councillors that, you know, that's way too many, way too many. It costs the city too much. But we've had six councillors for so many years now. And do we have a good quorum? Do we have enough people making the rules and regulations that the people have to live by? And like I said, I'd like to ask Dawn and Doug and Heather, do you feel six is adequate?
Sure. We'll just come across the group, okay?
Thank you for the question, Ernie. Honestly, I've never thought about it. As long as I've lived in Moose Jaw, it was six. But I know there was, used to be more because there's more number, more lights on the wall. It might be a, a good idea. I would think that would have to come, I, I would think that the public would need to request that though because I think it wouldn't probably be looked on favorably if council decided that we needed to increase it. But I think if the, if the citizens wanted that, that would be a good thing to bring forward and we could look at it.
Well, there's currently, including the mayor, there's seven people. So it, it is an odd number. And I, I don't know, I mean, I, I'm not aware of the history of when there was 10 councillors. I don't know if that was 10 councillors plus mayor. But I think you have to have an odd number so that you can have a vote on an issue and, and the majority wins. But as councillor Eby said, I believe that's something that the citizens would have to have a discussion about. Maybe that's a good topic for a town hall meeting and whether we need six or 10 or more or more. Thank you. Thank you, Doug.
Thanks for the question, Ernie. I'm always open to look at those options. Thanks.
Thank you. Go with the two.
I just, I just want to clarify what Wallace Insights is. It's a city planning and bylaw company out of Saskatoon, and they're also a construction company. So do your homework and check out it.
Thank you. Introduce yourself.
My name is Brittany and I, my question's for Perry Hoag. What do you plan to do differently from the current council? Like what's your, what do you plan on doing differently for the city of Moose Jaw and its future?
Well, just be another listener and that's basically it. Everybody's saying that. I don't want to be a generic thing here. Just so old public speaking things, not my forte. You do a very good job of that, by the way. And so my thing is like close quarters, personal relationships. And I want to build a relationship with everybody. That's, that's who I am. And people who know I am, that's, that's what, that's the qualities I can offer. And to be a listener, yes, absolutely. And to step forward, yes. I'm a blue collar worker. And I can have a different look on things and bring things to people's attention that maybe other people can't. And then what I want to do is join with my future councilman and come up with a plan for each and every division that we have in the city and make things streamlined and make things promising for people for generations to come. And that's what I want. Walk with me to get that.
Thank you, Perry. It's a lovely red hair.
Hi, my name's Melissa. My question is for Godwin. I've heard it mentioned a few times now from a few of you in the intros and stuff, a two-term maximum. My question is, what are your thoughts on that? Do you agree with it and why?
Absolutely. As a matter of fact, I just didn't have enough time to talk about that. I think when you serve people, when you get into elected office, it should be, it's not a career, it's not a job. You get to serve the people. And one of the things, if I get elected, is to max out the number of times you can serve two terms. I think if you can't get your ideas or your vision completed in the first term, if you do very well and you get elected a second time, eight years is enough time for you to get your ideas. You can't stay in council for 15 years. You run out of ideas. That is top of my priority. And I really think that it's not, we all got our businesses, we all got our job. We are out to serve the people. And when you're serving, make it, get it done within the eight-year period. And that's enough time. Because we're 33,000 or 35,000 or 34,000 people in this city. I think we are all smart to come up with new ideas. And if the people love you, they elect you a second time. After that, you're done. It shouldn't be a career, it shouldn't be a business. Thanks.
Thank you, Godwin.
Hi, my name is Christy. And my question's about SAMA, obviously. So this is particularly for Dawn because you're on city council as well as the, the board of SAMA. And I would like to know if you made the other councillors aware that the SAMA contract automatically renewed if nothing was done, such as notice of termination or negotiated prior to December 31st of 2023? Automatic renewal for five years.
Can you just clarify, Christy? What, what are you asking me? Are you asking me that I didn't know that it was going to just automatically renew if we didn't discuss it?
Well, the councillors that did pay attention to me did not know that it would. So I'm asking, did you communicate that to, to the rest of council?
Again, I'm not really following what you're asking. Sorry. I, I know you have something else you want to ask me, so please.
I would just like to know why, when I went to council in 2023, asking you guys to make some sort of decision, whether it negotiate for a 12-month renewal notice rather than 24? Or possibly terminate it? I'm asking why nothing was done.
The SAMA contract is up at the end of 2025.
Yes, but it had a 24-month notice for termination or renewal.
Okay, so that actually isn't the case. We are able to go into those negotiations with SAMA and the new council will be doing that, probably immediately in the new term.
I received the contract through a FOIP and that's not what the contract states.
So, so can I just, can I just answer? So are you saying then, Ms. Van Slick, that council isn't gonna, you're saying that you know that council isn't going to deal with this negotiation for SAMA now? And I don't, as an elected official?
It's over. You missed the date. You had to negotiate by December 31st.
Ms. Van Slick, you're incorrect.
I would like you to show that.
You're incorrect. Because the new council, the new council will be going into negotiations with SAMA to renew or not renew the contract.
Just so everybody knows, it's too late.
Thank you very much, ladies.
With respect, there is a lot of information about assessment that the average person doesn't understand. And it is very complicated and it's very difficult. And it's, it's, I'm always open to, like, I know that you think that I'm not open to investigating any other options. I'm always open to investigating options.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Once again, it would be nice if you responded to your emails like Shannon said. Also communicate that.
Ms. Van Slick, you, you came to my office in 2022. And with respect, walked into my office with a gentleman. I did not know who he was. You never introduced me to him. And I, when you left, you, I knew what his name was, but I didn't know who he was or who he represented to you. I didn't know if he was a lawyer for you or a friend or anything in that regard. I had to, what I did, because I am on the board of SAMA, I asked the CEO, because elected to elected is who I talked to. I don't talk to the staff. I talked to, I talked to our CEO with SAMA. And I asked her who the person was that you brought to my office because you did give me his name. And it was a tax agent. A tax agent that works to make sure that companies in every municipality hopefully pays less taxes than they want to pay as a business because that's their job as a tax agent, is to, is to figure out a way for companies that move into our cities so they can pay lower taxes. I had to find out from the SAMA CEO who that person was. And you didn't have the courtesy to tell me who he was when you were in my office. And then you all lawyered up. And at, at that point, I can't, I can't get into any, into any negotiations or conversations with you when you engage in a lawyer against the city as an elected official. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, ladies. And I think the offer by Dawn to have a visitor in the office with no, with some disclosure would be a worthwhile thing. And thank you both for your input on that. Now, I have looked at the clock, looked at the clock. And I think our ideas have been pretty well sorted. And good questions, you guys. Glad you came. I have some announcements to make. First of all, advanced polls tomorrow and Thursday, open at noon and they go to 6:00 PM. And that's at the Golden Nugget Center in the, in the exhibition grounds. And that's tomorrow, Tuesday and Thursday. That's when those are, those are there. Election Day, Wednesday, November 13th, 2024, from 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM. The regular polls are open on Election Day from 9:00 to 8:00. Poll number one is the Golden Nugget Center. Poll number two is the Cosmo Senior Citizen Center. And poll number three is United, Mental United Church. And poll number four is Church of Our Lady on South Hill. There's free transportation available on Election Day. And the regular routes provide service to the four polling locations. Paratransit services available for all polling stations, but just like regular time, bookings are required for this service and reservations must be made by 4:00 PM, 4:30, sorry, on Wednesday, November 6th. And phone number is 306-694-4484, 4488. Thank you. Centennial Auditorium for allowing us to utilize their space and equipment. Christian Molding for his assistance. Discover Moose Jaw for recording the forum and setting it up in live stream. So although there's not 1,000 people here, there are 1,000 people at home watching TV. And they're not watching football. I hope. Lastly, to thank the Moose Jaw kids.
Lastly, to thank the Moose Jaw kinsmen for planning this forum and for getting it organized. To you and to the candidates, thank you for taking time to be here, for making yourselves run for the office and perhaps open the city. Thank you very much. And we are adjourned.